Hello and welcome to this Tuesday, October 1st meeting of the Eureka City Council. We'll start this meeting with the now of the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jerojigi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Moulton.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Here.
Mayor Burgel.
Here. And would all who care to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, under our mayor announcements this evening, we have a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we have Amber here to receive that award. If you want to come on up. And Councilmember Moulton will be reading that for us.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hello, thank you.
Proclamation and recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2024. Whereas, October is annually recognized as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas, progress continues to be made towards violence prevention, domestic and intimate partner violence remains a serious issue affecting all people regardless of age, race, ethnicity, sex, gender, socioeconomic status, literacy, sexuality, ability, religion, culture, and immigration status. Whereas, domestic and intimate partner violence survivors are deprived of dignity, security, and autonomy with the systemic systematic use of control and power through physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic abuse. And whereas, children exposed to domestic violence can experience long-term consequences, including difficulty at school, substance abuse, behavioral problems in adolescents, and serious adult health problems. And whereas, Humboldt Domestic Violence Services has been serving Humboldt County since 1977 to continually support all those living with or escaping abuse. And whereas, all survivors deserve access to culturally responsive prevention programs and services to increase their safety and self-sufficiency. HDVS enlists a diverse array of allies, agencies, and community members in supporting survivors of domestic and intimate partner violence. And whereas, only together can we change the health and safety of our community by challenging the societal norms that perpetuate violence. Now, therefore, I, Katie Moulton, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, recognize the month of October 24 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The council celebrates HDVS's 47 years of effort to improve community safety by breaking the cycle of domestic and intimate partner violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I say something very quickly? Good evening. On behalf of Humboldt Domestic Violence Services staff, thank you for acknowledging Domestic Violence Awareness Month with this proclamation. Survivors of domestic violence are often isolated with the secret happening behind closed doors. And we seek to bring awareness to this issue every day so that survivors can come out of the shadows and begin to heal and thrive. Thank you for your continued support of survivors and Humboldt Domestic Violence Services. Thank you.
Thank you. And this evening, we do have a presentation for our Redwood Coast Music Festival. Ms. McKenna, if you'd come up with wearing your, this hat. You do wear many hats in our community, and we're so thankful for that. And welcome.
So, yes, I am here to present to the city our official poster for the 32nd Annual Festival. And if you're looking at the back of my shirt, that's the poster. Except it looks better with a blue frame around it. It shows it up more. So, this was once again painted by Matt Beard at last year's festival in the upstairs balcony in the back corner of the Eagle House. And he has agreed to do that again for us this year. So, if you're coming to the festival, be sure, you're looking at the stage this way, turn around and look in that back corner. And Matt should be up there sometime throughout the festival weekend working on a poster for our next year's event. So, the event starts on Thursday, Thursday night, with a kickoff dance at the Adorni Center. And then moves into Friday, opening ceremonies at the Adorni Center. But also, other, the other five venues are going to be opened at 1:00 this time, too. That's mainly because we now have six local hotels that are sold out for the festival weekend. And we always sell a lot of tickets the day of the festival, too. So, we're expecting a large enthusiastic crowd this year. We've had nothing but good vibes. So, we're on a roll after trying to survive the two years of hiatus due to COVID. So, we want to thank the city. The city has been a 32-year partner with us on putting on this event. And we're proud to be partners with the city, to work together to better our community, to bring a fun, multi-generational event for families, and to help stimulate the economic development of our area.
Okay. There you go.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn. Thanks for being here. Okay. And then I just have a few announcements in my mayor's report, actually not announcements. I was able to intend, and this is, I think, really something important to our community that I want to talk about, is volunteers. And this weekend, Saturday, at Sequoia Park, the city held a rather large event, a barbecue, for all of the volunteers that, that work and make our city a better place. And, you know, we often hear that the business is the heartbeat of our city, and I agree with that. But I also agree, without the volunteers, our city would not be the way that it is today. And I just really want to shout out and give a big appreciation to everyone out there that spends their time, whether it's in a group, you know, whether it's on a committee or any of that, or if it's just on your own, doing a part. I catch people out picking up trash all the time. It's really a, a great thing to see people loving our city. So, thank you all for that. I was invited to, by the Freemasons, to do their remarks at a cornerstone, at their cornerstone ceremony at Eureka High Gym. And that was an honor and a privilege. That's a very sacred event. And it was, it was an experience that I won't forget for a very long time. Because we have domestic, had domestic violence here today, I wanted to give a shout out to a ribbon cutting that I did last week. And that was for Lots for Tots in the Closing Closet. And something I learned about them at that, at that ribbon cutting was that they donate a lot of their extra clothes to the Raven Project, Humboldt County Domestic Violence, a lot of these programs that really, people can benefit from that, from the clothes that are donated. Let's see. And then, lastly, I saved the most important one for last. So, October 20, we won't be having a meeting next, the next meeting. So, I wanted to bring this up today. That October 21st is the celebration, the five-year celebration of the return of Talawat. And what an event that was. And many of you were there. And if you were there, you'll know that in that room, what a blessing, in that room, you could hear a pin drop in that room. And that room was packed down at the Adorni Center. And what a gift and a privilege to be able to, to work together and bridge those pains and those hurts. Now, they're not fixed completely, but being able to work and make that amends and make a difference in our community. And so, I really want to honor that. I want to honor the Wiat tribe for all that they do and for our relationship. I just really appreciate them. So, with that, we will open it up for public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. In pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. So, without further ado, who would like to speak in public comment? Come on up. Welcome, Claudette.
Thank you. I wanted to share a story with you. One thing I enjoy doing is watching nature be nature. And just one, a couple days ago, I was watching from my balcony as I sat there in the sun, enjoying the sun, and watched people in nature. I saw a spider web, and it was there. And then I saw a fly actually come and land in that spider web. And as I watched the spider struggle in this web, trying to get out, the spider would come down and watch it every so often and go back up. And, and I'm watching this poor spi, this fly just struggling. And I'm thinking to myself, wow, that reminds me of what it looks like when we're in sin. Because we're struggling and struggling, trying to get out of it on our own, and it just does not work. And again, I thought about, I, I have the power to unleash this, this poor fly as it's struggling. But I thought again, no, that's not right. Because if I'm here watching nature be nature, that's just a part of nature. As I thought about these things, and I prayed, and I was talking to the Lord about it, and He began to talk to me about this situation. And, and I've come up with two points that I want to share with you. From this, if you think about this story of this fly being caught in a spider web, the two things I, I got out of it were, who are we to dictate what the natural order of nature is when God has already defined it for us? My second point was, even though we haven't given power and authority, we don't always need to exercise that power, especially when it's at the detriment of others. Just as I know that the, eventually, the spider came down, wound up the poor fly, took him off to his death, that's the same as sin. It eventually leads to death. So, I leave you with this question. Where do you recognize the use of these two points in your leadership over this city? These are just things for you to ponder. I, too, fall into these categories of things in my own life. And I have to use discernment and repentance so that I don't stay doing things that are against the natural order. I will continue to pray for you guys. I am going on another journey. I won't be around for a while, but that's okay. You'll be in my prayers. To God be the glory, and Lord bless you.
Thanks, Claudette. Welcome, Trent.
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, thank you again for what you do, serving our city. I appreciate every one of you and some of you back there. I, I had a friend, I've been here for, I don't know, 30, 40 years. I've been here 40 years. And I don't have to be here. I feel called to be here. But this is my city. You know, I love this city. I have great concern for this city. And I have some friends that moved away about 10 years ago, real dear friends. They were born and raised here, and they moved to Idaho. And they came up for a visit, haven't been back to Eureka for 10 years. And it was just sad to hear their perception of certain things about the city that have deteriorated, you know, not, not in a more, not growing, not more positive, but like it, it slipped. And I was thinking about, you know, the Lord said, what's, what's greatest commandment? Love God with all your heart, soul, mind, and strength. That's like the beginning of everything, God, honoring God. And then He said, the second command is like it. Love your neighbor as yourself. And I pondered that. You know, the, the golden rule, do unto others as you would have them do to you. Paul said, God's not a God of disorder, but of peace, order and peace. And I think, you know, loving our neighbor, doing unto others. As you make decisions, you know, the Lord gave parables, love the least of these, and the good Samaritan. And He's all about, you know, people that are needy and need help. And we should never forget that, and that should always be a priority. But we can't, in doing that, neglect other neighbors, like homeowners, concern for them, or businesses. You know, there should be an equal concern to love all neighbors. And so, that's what I'm praying about. Those are the kinds of things that I'm asking the Lord for wisdom. How, how can we love our neighbor with, with wisdom? And, you know, fruitfulness? You know, I want to see our, our city continue to be a beautiful place and improve and be good for everyone, you know, and have equal concern. So, thank you again for all you do. Praying for you.
Thank you, Trent. Mr. Parr, welcome.
I know I kind of made fun of you all last time, and I apologize for that. But this time, I'm here to talk about something serious, and that's patriotism. And, and so, I wanted to give each one of you, Pam, could you give each one of them an American flag? So that we could all be in the spirit together. And if you could give Kim this red, white, and blue bouquet. I want to talk about patriotism and immigration. Immigration is a pretty big issue right now. We have millions of people pouring across the southern border, most of them looking for a better life, coming from a terrible existence. And, and some of them have traveled thousands of miles at great risk to themselves and great expense. And I believe we should fully support and encourage these people. And I feel like sometimes we fail to do that as much as we could. And so, I just wanted to... We have a person who has traveled thousands of miles at great expense and trouble to himself. And, and he is our newest legal citizen. And I was wondering if maybe the mayor could lead us in a round of applause for our newest legal citizen,
So, friends, the decorum in the meeting is not to clap for people. So, we do this kind of clap just because it...
You were so enthusiastically clapping last time. I just figured it...
So, you missed my amends last, last meeting. Yeah, you weren't here. But yeah, we are going to follow decorum. Thank you, Mr. Parr. We appreciate you, and congratulations, Mr. Lowenstein.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
... Americans, what a great pleasure it is to stand in front of the city council, this very first time. In long, long, long years that I attended those council meetings, 200 and something, I stopped counting at about 174. So, what a pleasure it is to stand here as an American citizen. I can't wait to use my newly acquired rights as an American citizen to get fully engaged in the political process on every level that I can and devote my future for this beautiful city of Eureka that I traveled to many, many miles. Birthplace of Alexander von Humboldt, for those that wouldn't know, Berlin. So, that is what Alexander and I share with each other. And I always loved Humboldt. I always loved Eureka. And I think it's time for other courage, courageous citizens to stand up and get into the ring. I hope that Lucky will make Eureka Lucky, Eureka Go Lucky. And yeah, it'll be a prosperous and joyful future that we are looking forward to with my newly acquired rights as an American citizen. I'm really looking forward to the American Roots Music Festival and especially to one of my favorite, all-time favorite players. We have him right here, in the small print. He somehow disappeared on me getting older. You might need glasses. Where do we have him? Red Falkert is playing, and one of the most excellent blues and Americana players, there he is, Red Falkert. Don't, shouldn't be missed. I'm looking forward to attend future city council meetings, and I hope that other citizens and I myself will have the opportunity to get engaged on a local level with the local politics in the future. Thank you so much.
Hello there. Welcome.
Good evening, council mayor, city manager, Pam, and all you guys. Thanks for giving a shout out to all the volunteers that clean up litter. I, being one of those people. Riverlife cleaned up over 25,000 pounds of trash in Fortuna this year. And I'm also a volunteer for the pack-out team. We did a cleanup behind In-N-Out, and I help with them when I can. So, thank you for acknowledging that. Appreciate it. And congratulations, Cornelius.
Thank you so much.
And also, I would like to say that I was at the rally yesterday at the gazebo. And I'm very impressed with the district attorney and the sheriff and the three supervisors that came to it. Proposition 36 is very important for not only this county, but the whole state. Everybody should be voting yes on that. It will solve a lot of problems. I mean, it doesn't solve everything completely, but it definitely gets to the root of the problem. And we do have a problem in this county. And was kind of disappointed to see none of you guys were there. But anyway, it was an excellent, beautiful rally. I'm really in support of the sheriff and the district attorney and the supervisors that put the time in to come. And I really appreciate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. This is my first time coming here, so I'm a little anxious. I'm Dr. Kim Irvin. I'm an obstetrician-gynecologist who recently retired from active practice. And I've lived in this community for over 35 years. So, I also am a volunteer. So, a couple years ago, I decided to start volunteering for the different groups in town that, first with the Sequoia Park, removing ivy. My husband and I started that monthly. And then, because, of course, we were enjoying the waterfront trail. And I love being outdoors here. That's one of the reasons I came here and have stayed here is because of the beautiful place we live in. It's not an easy place to practice medicine. I'm sure you are all aware of that. But fortunately, because how we're needed here and because of the beauty that surrounds us, I have stayed. Now that I'm retired full-time, I can invest more time in helping the city. We initially started the waterfront trail, part of the Eureka waterfront trail that goes between Costco and C Street. We were helping remove invasive species, planting new native species. And so, that was a monthly thing we started doing as well. Then, because I'd been doing that for a while, Rachel, who is in charge of the Trail Steward system, the Trail Stewards are a volunteer group of people that monthly clean up and help maintain the waterfront trail, also the Hickshari Trail. And of course, eventually, we'll have a trail all the way to Arcata. And the plan ultimately is to have a trail between Humboldt, Del Norte, all the way to San Francisco. So, there's different portions of the trail that are already established. But unfortunately, there is not a team that actively maintains that area. So, you, you rely mainly on volunteers. I'll quickly state that since taking over the leadership role of the Trail Volunteer Trail Stewards between Tid Street and the Adorni Center, which is a beautiful, probably one of the prettiest parts of our trail, what we end up picking up most of the time is large homeless encampments that have been abandoned. It's very discouraging. It's very troubling to me. I, I know that a lot of my colleagues are afraid to bring their family along the trail now because of the homeless situation. So, I'm very concerned, and I feel like we need to really address this now, especially since we have more power to do that. We have to find a solution so we can get them out of the beautiful, from sulling and trashing, basically, parts of the trail that we should be enjoying.
Thank you, Dr. Irvin. Do we have anyone else in the audience that would care to speak at public comment?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Stacia. I think you remember me.
Welcome. Yes.
At the city council meeting on June 18th, please watch that, staff presented information on how to dismantle the design review committee. Ms. Kenyon answered, "We write our own rules for what's allowed, for setbacks, and what heights can be." She further went on to say, "At 2.36 minutes, you can resolve this with a code and require a setback." "The most serious failure of leadership is the failure to foresee the consequences of their actions. I am here tonight to let you know the consequences of your actions. The building that you okayed is not affordable. It's not low-income, and it has two vacant apartments next door to it. It's not green, it's not solar. It comes with garages, with invite cars. It has a big footprint. There's no grass, no play-out area. It's all cement. This does not help with our vulnerable population in need. It's not helping with the housing that we need for our state numbers. This is for profit only. The most serious thing that you did to my family is you've displaced us. I've moved. I had no choice. I told you that this was going to be the most detrimental health consequence to me and my daughter. I described to Dady and to, to Kim in a letter and told you what, how the consequences, how severe this was." It's very ironic that Katie wrote in her flyer for, for her, her thing. "When my husband and I bought a house, our first and only, we asked ourselves, bup, bup, bup. It was a big decision for us, since we've been saving for years, like I was. And we were only going to get one shot at buying a house, like I have. I was 40 years old when I bought my house. I'm reaching 60 now. I don't have another chance. I don't have a work history. I can't do this again." That's not compassion. You dissed me.
Please address the whole council.
I'm sorry. You're all, you're all responsible. Kim, you didn't get back to me either. You said that you were going to call me, you hadn't. Okay? I'm sorry. I want, I want you to know there was a failure here of leadership. When you try to feel like you're part, and you're, you're like, you're part of what we're doing, Scott, you're entitled comment on the outpost. Not everyone has a great life here. I am displaced. I now have to drive. Me and my daughters and my husband have to drive now every day. How is this green? You've displaced a family. I'm not helping my neighbors. I'm not picking up garbage. I'm not helping with deciding on parks. I've moved. You've made me dislike my city. You've made me move. My house is abandoned. You know, there's three abandoned houses in my neighborhood now. Three abandoned houses. I'm not going to give you their address because I don't want you to go and find them.
Thank you.
This is the consequences of your leadership.
Your three minutes are up, but we appreciate you being here. Thank you. So, decorum is no clapping in the meeting.
None of you deserve to be up there. None of you. If I was one of you, I would...
Excuse me, it's time to go. Thank you for being here. Do we have anybody else in the audience that would care to speak? Do you see anybody on Zoom? Oh, no, excuse me.
No, you guys can keep those. I mean, I realize that those two don't like to touch them.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Always great to see a patriot.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm one of the volunteers with my wife, Kim, there. And I'm always wondering, what is the grand plan for the homeless? Is, is there optimism? Is there, it's getting worse all the time. I mean, I could get into specifics about some of the things we find. You wouldn't want to hear the specifics. It should be approached from a public hygiene view, I think. I mean, look at San Francisco, how bad that's got. Anybody that's been down to San Francisco in the last 10 years has their own little horror story of walking around things, stepping in it, avoiding screaming people, the smells, the general filth. And now, now we've got it here. So, what is the, is there any kind of optimism? We're going to have a big lot to put these people in? Newsom has recently done what he can do. Sounds like he made a pretty good move there, a pretty good statement about giving the power to move homeless out of problem areas. Well, we've been dealing with the problem areas here in Eureka, as you all know. And what is the grand plan? Is there optimism? I mean, that might take a while for anybody to explain the grand plan to me. But, I mean, I've seen the little container can homes. It's a small step. A lot of us have worked and traveled through third-world countries. We can see what they do. People are left to themselves or their cultures are more compassionate and they feed these people pretty well, even stray dogs in some countries. But here, I guess there's Biddy Chan, there's the facility there on Third Street, Second Street. That's so bad, right on Third Street. That's so, so bad. I mean, it's terrible driving through there. It's worse every time I see it. And we live on the edge of a green belt and I've had the police down there numerous times and I know how the police feel. They should do their jobs. They've, they've yet to not respond. They always come. And one guy even came with a dog because we figured we needed a dog down there to move people out. There's all manners of things down there. Stolen electronics. I suppose they're stolen. Some of them are smashed up. Some of them are just fine. New sleeping bags that have been abandoned, new clothing that's just laying there in wet heaps. I have a friend that owns a, he owns a sporting goods store here in town. He says they come in with credit cards. Now, that was several years ago. He told me that. I don't know if they're still coming in with credit cards, but they walk out with all kinds of stolen things along with, along with what they've just purchased. So, anyway, just wondered if there was a grand plan. Curious.
Thank you. If you'd like to send any, we can't answer questions during public comment, but if you'd like to send an email, we can get those questions answered for you.
Email. Great. Thanks.
You betcha. All right. Looks like Epic.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Simmons and I'm actually trying to make this public comment in my personal capacity, but I can't change my Zoom name. I just wanted to thank the city council for taking steps to build more housing. Eureka earned a pro housing designation from the Housing and Community Development Department this year. And I think that building all this new housing is going to help with the homeless problem. And so, I'm just grateful to the city council for taking those steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one in the audience and no one else on Zoom, do you see anybody?
Anyone else on Zoom for public comment?
Yes, Lucky.
Oh, welcome Lucky.
Hi, I guess I'm trying to turn on my camera. I guess I can't, right?
No.
Okay, hi, my name is Lucky, I mean, Tavasak Lucky Sebentong. And I just wanted to introduce myself. I grew up, I am the ward four candidate this time. And I just wanted to say that I grew up here in Eureka since I was six years old. And I'm raising my four children here. They go to our local schools, Eureka City Schools. And my wife and I were participants in the PTA and everything. We just love our community. I'm a board member at the Boys and Girls Club and also a Rotarian president. A few weeks ago, I attended a neighborhood watch meeting for one of the neighborhoods in my district. The Bridge District. It's that area near Target and between the bridge there. And they have many concerns and most of those are concerning the homeless and drug use there. I just wanted to bring that out and make you guys be aware. One of the main concerns is that commit place that, you know, that 18-unit property that was put in by Arcata House Partnership and the York Tribe. In theory, that's a good idea, you know, affordable housing and for the homeless. But, you know, in the last couple of years, the concerns are that there have been drug use and drugs sold there, distributed there, fentanyl. They sent me articles from the Los Coast Outpost. They said that at the beginning, the director said that she would have 24-hour security and staff on site to deal with any issues for safety, but they are not doing that anymore. So, I think that as the city of Eureka, you know, we have a stake partnership in this. And since it's located in the city of Eureka, we should hold them accountable for this. If it's causing, you know, safety concerns and drug abuse in that area. I would like to request more police patrol in that area just to keep the neighborhood safe. And I'm driving by there, you know, once in a while to see what's going on, to see if the neighbors' concerns are true. So, I just wanted to bring that up and there is safety concern there. I just wanted to bring that up to the council. And I appreciate you guys and everything. Thank you.
Thanks Lucky. Do you see anyone else, Sharon?
Anyone else on Zoom for public comment? I see no one.
Seeing no one will close the public comment and open the public hearing, Community Development Block Grant with Project Manager Raymond.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. Tonight's public hearing is for the 2024 CDBG, which stands for Community Development Block Grant, NOFA, Funding Availability. And I have a slide. Okay.
But you can do the arrows, all right?
Okay. How do I upload it?
Isn't that it?
No.
Oh, yes.
Let's see. Okay, so. So, tonight's public hearing is for the. Okay. Tonight's public hearing is for the 24 Community Development Block Grant to Notice of Funding Availability. Okay, and. Background, there's approximately 34 million available through this CDBG NOFA. The maximum a jurisdiction can apply for is 3.6 million and the deadline to apply is December 30th. The city of Eureka was approached by the Housing Authority to partner for the current CDBG NOFA. And staff recommends moving forward with an application to support their project. Sorry. This evening, we have with the Cheryl Churchill, the executive director of the Housing Authority. He'll be describing the uses of the CDBG funds.
Welcome Cheryl.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Kristin, and thank you, City Council, for hearing us tonight. My name is Cheryl Churchill. I'm the executive director at the Housing Authority. And I want to start by saying how grateful we are for the city's assistance so far from the Design Review Committee, providing us feedback and eventually approval for the two projects we're working on. And for the work of the Planning Department to move these projects forward. We're very thankful for your cooperation and assistance. Now, the critical piece for these projects and for bringing more housing to Eureka is the funding part. And so, with that, we came across the CDBG grant funding. And we realized that not only do we have an opportunity to bring from eight units to 44 units of new affordable housing, but also to update the community center that is within about three tenths of a mile of that site. We hadn't anticipated doing this until further down the road. But with this funding opportunity, we believe that we could do it now. There is a great need for that community center to be updated. It's 1950s duplex that's been converted over the years that our Boys and Girls Club uses to serve anywhere from 70 to more than 100 people on a regular basis. And the work that they're doing there is important. The EPD has also used the adjacent duplex to have a presence in our neighborhood, which is also critical. So, the need to update these facilities, to have that constant presence in the neighborhood is very important to us. I believe it's also important to those other parties involved. And we just ask that you would consider applying for this grant opportunity with us as a sub-recipient. And also, I believe our developers are online if there's any more technical questions that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Did you have anything further? Are we ready for questions? Okay, does anyone have any questions about this item? No? Yes or no? No question? Okay, seeing no questions, we will open this public hearing for public comment. Is there anyone here to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
My name is Monica Rose and I'm the executive director for the Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods. I have been working for the Boys and Girls Club for 23 years. I worked at a clubhouse unit for 12 of those years. And like Cheryl said, we're serving anywhere between 70 and 100 kids at that site. If you have not been there, it's incredible. We've got a lot of things happening for the kids. It's jam-packed. We really do need more space. With those 70 kids, we only have one restroom and that's one restroom for the entire 70 kids. Our kitchen is pretty small and we do cooking clubs. We do family dinner nights. So, the kids are in the kitchen cooking for their families and then their families are coming to the site. The kids really deserve a new facility. It's rundown. We put a lot of time and effort into remodeling what we can, but you can only do so much with the building. So, we're just, I'm here in support of this application and I hope you guys decide to do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Hello and welcome.
Hello, members of the council. I'm Rod Strum. My wife Susan and I live at 3459 Elizabeth Street here in Eureka. We've been there for just about 40 years. So, this project is in our neighborhood. Alice Burney School, the Jacobs Site, Calvary Lutheran Church, Housing Authority Property. The Housing Authority is actually a really great neighbor. Some people think there's something wrong with the neighborhood because of Housing Authority Property. It's the opposite of that. So, a couple of the things that make the Housing Authority a great neighbor are that they provide that space for Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods, as Monica mentioned, and for the Eureka Police Annex. So, to have both of those assets, as well as the Housing Authority itself in our neighborhood, a real asset, a really, really great for my neighborhood. And so, I appreciate them. So, I encourage you to pursue, approve, pursue. I urge you to approve pursuing this grant and I think, I think it'll be great. Thank you all for serving on the council. Seems like it can be sort of a thankless job sometimes. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Is there anyone else in chambers that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move over to Zoom and it looks like Epic.
Hi, Matt Simmons again, in my personal capacity. Strong support for seeking this grant. Seems like a no-brainer. Please do it.
Thank you.
Lucky.
Hi Lucky.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, yeah, hi, this is Lucky again and I'm also the director for the Boys and Girls Club. And we have leadership meetings there and I've seen how worn down the table, like everything is there. And I support in favor of applying for this grant. I was also a volunteer at Alice Burney School a few years ago. And I mean, some of the kids attended our clubhouse there and I could see what the impact it made on their lives. And I think it's very important for us to approve this, you know, this process and apply for this grant. Thank you.
Thank you Lucky. Do you see anyone else?
Anyone else on Zoom for public comment on this matter? I see none.
So, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion, comments, and a vote. Councilmember Fernandez.
I mean, is it as simple to say I move staff recommendation? Okay, good. Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Any comments?
It's just more of a question for clarity, if I may.
Sure.
Yeah, just because of the comments, it says here in the last paragraph of the agenda item, "The project proposes to redevelop or relocate." And so, I'm curious if the intent is to redevelop and keep within that portion of the community that people seem to enjoy.
Thank you for your question. We actually have a flyer out on the table, which basically just proposes to keep the facilities in the same location, to expand the footprint a little bit, to enlarge them, but basically keep them right there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? Please vote. Oh, no. Councilmember Castellano, did you have a comment?
Sure, I'm just going to appreciate Director Churchill and the Housing Authority for their effort with the repositioning. And I'm very excited to see this moving forward and for your work identifying a funding source as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
I do have a quick question. Regarding the tenant protection vouchers, I just was wondering if you could explain that. Is it okay for me to? Still okay for me to ask questions?
Generally, this is comment period, but we'll take that question.
Yeah, sorry. I apologize. It was just something I just noticed. So, the tenant protection vouchers, the TVPs for eight impacted households within the green phase may be issued to assist with relocation. If it says may, does that mean may not? Is that flexible?
They're all tenants, so there's eight units that we're redeveloping. Again, this is on the green phase site, which is separate from the grant that we're seeking approval to apply for. But just to address the question, anybody who needs to be relocated will be assisted either by us relocating them to one of our other units if they're available or by them getting a tenant protection voucher, which is basically a Section 8 voucher. And then with our assistance, getting relocated within Humboldt County, they can also choose to leave with that if they prefer. But so, basically, there's kind of a menu of various options that those eight households would have for relocation.
Okay, thank you.
Please vote. Thank you.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
This takes us to the consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request should be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. And I'm not aware of any items to be pulled. Does anybody? Okay. Councilmember Fernandez?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Moving on to legislative action correspondence, does anybody have any of that? It's all done. Great. So, then we shall move on to ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance amending Chapter 51, Solid Waste, Section 51.29 with Project Manager Pratsker.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Robin Pratsker with the Community Services Department, and tonight I have a quick PowerPoint for you introducing an ordinance update. I'm going to go ahead and see if the shared screen will work. It did say it was disabled. Okay, there we go. Okay. So, tonight before you is an update to Chapter 51, the chapter regarding solid waste. And it has to do with SB 1383 implementation, which I know you're familiar with over these past few years. So, just as a quick background reminder, we did do an update to the entire chapter in February of 2023, because SB 1383 does have so many pieces to it. So, we did update the requirements for collection of trash, recycling, and compost, new requirements by franchise haulers for contamination, bin colors, labels, and route reviews. There's a whole new program with commercial edible food generators to donate excess edible food. And then there's also procurement targets for the city to use recovered organic waste products and to utilize recycled paper products. So, that was already complete last year. But tonight, Section 29 does need a small update, so we can begin to implement these requirements. So, Tier 1 and Tier 2 to edible food generators are defined in the graphic here on the screen. But part of SB 1383's expectation is that they're inspected annually to ensure they're compliant with the code. And what an inspection includes is making sure that they have a contract with a food recovery organization, that they're keeping records of what they're donating, and that they're not intentionally spoiling food that could be fed to people. And we are proposing that the inspection is performed by the County of Humboldt Environmental Health Consumer Protection Team. Oops. So, specifically what that clarification is, is that these food generators register with the County of Humboldt Division Environmental Health, that they pay an annual fee, and that they submit to their annual inspection. So, just a quick few questions that might be brought up as we're talking about this change is what will the annual fee be? The county did already pass two fee tiers based on whether it's a business type that they currently inspect or a business type that they do not currently inspect. The inspections would be unannounced. We will need an MOU with the county, which we'll bring back to at a later date. And there are 33 generators across the Tier 1 and Tier 2 categories. So, that's all I've got here today, other than the recommendation to introduce, but I'll stop share there for a second and see if there's any questions or comments.
Do we have any questions for Project Manager Pratsker? Councilmember Maltin?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and your ongoing taking this law piece by piece. There's a lot in there. Who is paying for the staff? How does that get covered? Do the fees cover it? Is there additional budgeting required?
Yeah, right now for the inspection, the county Consumer Protection Program is recouping their costs through that annual fee.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further questions from council, we will open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone in chambers who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, looking to Zoom. Do you see anyone, Cheryl?
I see no one on Zoom.
Great. So, we will close the public comment and bring it back to council for a motion or comments. Councilmember Bauer?
I'll make a motion to way full reading, read by title only, and introduce Bill Number 1025-CS in ordinance of the City Council amending Chapter 51, Solid Waste, Section 5129.
Second. Any further comment? Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
That moves us on to report and action items. The Flock Safety Automated License Plate Recognition Cameras and Technology with Chief Stevens.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I'm before you to discuss the implementation of Flock Safety Stationary Automated License Plate Readers and related software within the city. As the Chief of Police, you've entrusted me with the safety and security of our city, our citizens, and those that come to the city to enjoy things we have to offer. In our current day and age we currently live in, policing looks different than it did 10, 15, 20 years ago. Technology dominates our lives from the appliances in our homes to the computers in our workplaces to the cellphones, many computers we each carry with us every day. It's not as easy to police as it was. We can't just put officers on the street. We can't put them on foot and expect that we're going to get the results that we want or the results that we may have seen 20 years ago. Don't get me wrong, we always need officers on the street. They always will need to be out there, responding to calls and being as proactive as time allows to change the unwanted behaviors that affect our quality of life and to intervene when the evil knocks at our door. I'll talk about that later tonight when our staffing, give you an update on that and the issues that we face, as well as other agencies across the state and honestly, the country when it comes to officer recruitment and retention. But as the chief, and how I'm going to police our community and our detectives and officers, I need to provide them with the highest level of service to our city. One way is through technology. This is why I'm bringing this presentation to you this evening. The technology and services the Flock LPR cameras will bring to our city and our region will be crime-fighting tools that will have direct and meaningful impacts on our ability to further police the city and bring further safety to our community members. We aim to leverage the use of the LPR technology for the good of the public, using it as a reactive measure to solve crimes and keep the community safe. I have two main objectives we hope to gain from the placement and implementation of this technology. The first is crime fighting, of course, locating wanted vehicles and persons, as well as abducted or kidnapped citizens and childrens, and other alerts such as silver alerts that we may be able to get somebody back home to their loved ones. We'll be able to recover a higher number of stolen vehicles and get them back to their owners quickly. We will be able to locate vehicles associated with crimes committed in our region quicker. We can use this technology as an investigative tool to further investigations after a crime has been committed within our city, giving our investigators quicker leads and reduce the time a suspect is potentially on the loose to victimize others in our community. The second objective I have, and I believe we will be able to accomplish, is these cameras will become a deterrent for criminal activity that involves a vehicle in our city. Let's make it well-known that the city has this technology and will use it to catch you if you decide to commit a crime with a vehicle in our city. This technology truly has the capability to be a force multiplier for EPD. I've seen some of the comments online and heard some of the concerns being brought forward about this technology. I feel the presentation tonight by Flock that will follow my introduction here will answer many of those questions and concerns as to the Flock Safety and Technology, what it is, definitely what it isn't, and how it has been implemented all over the state of California in the U.S. Attached to the agenda summary was our draft policy that will govern EPD's use and access of this technology, how and when it will be shared with allied agencies, as well as the permitted and impermissible uses. This policy was drafted off of a policy used by Vallejo PD. The policy is built off the best practices by Lexipol, the company responsible for creating policies for most of the police agencies in the state of California. During the drafting of the Vallejo's policy, they worked closely with their Surveillance Advisory Board and drafting their final policy, taking to effect most of the organization's recommendations. This board for Vallejo PD functions as an advisement to the city, City Council, on best practices to protect the safety, privacy, and civil rights of Vallejo residents in connection with the acquisition, borrowing, and or use by city departments of surveillance technology that collects, analyzes, processes, or stores information about Vallejo residents. This board worked closely with Oakland Privacy, which is a citizens coalition that works regionally to defend the right to privacy and enhance surveillance oversight. We believe the policy is thorough, addresses the concerns raised by the technology, and is strong enough to hold people accountable for any misuse of the technology. Privacy is the biggest concern probably felt by those with concerns about the technology. What can happen to your vehicle information? Because remember, that's all the system is collecting is vehicle description and license plate, nothing else. The information is the property of EPD. We own it. The data is collected with cameras placed under our contract, and it's our information. It is not owned by Flock, and Flock can't access the data for their purposes. The city manager and I have met with Flock representatives when we were working through the contract and also working through the entire project, and they ensured us, and we ensure that we will not sign a contract if long as that language is in there saying that they cannot sell our information. Data is only stored in a secured cloud base for 30 days, then it is deleted and cannot be recovered. Only EPD can determine who has access to the data. Therefore, Flock Safety cannot sell or share this data with third parties, and this will be a part of our contract. EPD will share data with other law enforcement agencies and compliance with our policy, and they must meet the same requirements as EPD when they're making an inquiry about our data. I want to end with some local information about Flock LPRs. Humboldt County Sheriff's Department has implemented this technology within the county and have already seen the benefits. In the roughly six months they have had the cameras, the technology has led to 25 stolen vehicles being recovered. More importantly, they used the technology recently to safely arrest a violent suspect in a domestic violence investigation that was described to me by one of our officers, who had contact with the victim as the worst facial injuries they had ever seen on a DV victim in their career. The suspect lived in a fortified place in a rural property in the county that wasn't easily accessible, and placed deputies at extreme risk if they attempted contact with this location. Following the issuance of the warrant for the suspect, EPD officers located the suspect's vehicle parked at a residence just outside the city limits. Again, the safety of the deputies was considered at this location as it presented many challenges to contact the individual inside. However, the investigators now have the license plate on the suspect's vehicle, which they entered into their local hot list in the Flock system. A short time later, one of the LPR cars or cameras hit on the car, and deputies were able to quickly locate it, conduct a traffic stop, and arrest the suspect without any incident, and he will be held accountable for his actions on his warrant. The SO's cameras also have been instrumental in EPD's ability to investigate the theft of the pride flag from the courthouse earlier this year. The surveillance cameras at the courthouse captured the suspect, but due to many factors, didn't capture the license plate on the vehicle. Utilizing the description only, which was entered into a search in the Flock system, a match was obtained. The investigators got a picture of the vehicle to match to the surveillance footage, as well as the license plate. This information was enough for investigators to run the license plate through DMV and receive information on the registered owner. This gave them a tangible lead to start their investigation, and during the contact with the registered owner, we were able to get an admission of guilt from the suspect at that time, and that case has been forwarded to the District Attorney's Office. EPD has had many recent investigations into drive-by shootings, brazen commercial and residential burglaries, where we've had vehicle descriptions of those vehicles allegedly involved, as well as we've had in the past unsolved fatal vehicle versus pedestrian investigations that are still unsolved. I believe with a robust Flock LPR system, we may have been able to solve or be further into resolution in these cases than we currently are. We're not the only agency in Humboldt County in talks with Flock to implement this technology. Cal Poly Humboldt, Blue Lake Rancheria, Fortuna Police Department, and the DA's Office Retail Theft Task Force are all in talks with Flock to have this technology placed in their jurisdictions or to help with specific tasks such as retail theft. This technology can and will be a game changer in crime fighting and crime prevention in Humboldt County, as it has been in communities small and large across the state. You probably don't even know it, but Mendocino County, Lake County, all the way down the 101 have cameras, multiple cameras posted along their highways that you drive by anytime you go to the Bay Area. So, it's not a new technology to the region, and it's being used for the good of the communities. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jonathan Paz, the Community Affairs Manager for Flock, along with Tariq Bright, the Territory Sales Manager for Flock, for a presentation on their technology, and then we'll all be available to answer questions afterwards.
Good evening. Could folks hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Wonderful. I just need the opportunity to screen share. I just had a quick presentation for you all.
I believe he's working on that.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Good evening again. My name is Jonathan Paz. I'm here on behalf of Flock Safety. It's hard to follow the chief's statements, but I will do my best, and I'll try to be succinct and answer any questions after. Again, Flock Safety, our mission is to shape a safer future together. We were actually founded in 2017 when our CEO was the victim of property crime. At the time, there was a series of car burglaries in his neighborhood, and he had a doorbell camera. So, he thought maybe using the doorbell footage, he could, he brought it to his local police department. They can solve the crime. When he brought it there, they, they basically told them, law enforcement told them, they need the license plate. So, he did a little bit of research and found out that license plate reading technology has been around for over 30 years. It's just very expensive. So, he developed a state-of-the-art prototype, actually using an iPhone at first, but now we have a state-of-the-art technology that is more affordable and accessible to communities like yours. And we are now in over 5,000 communities across the United States, helping solve over 12% of crime nationwide. And we're really trying to help answer that paradox, right, where, you know, police are expected to do more with less. It's harder to recruit officers and violent crime, violent crime is more modern. Crime nowadays, it's more modern, and we need to actually update and keep up with these developments in how crime happens today. So, we find to be, LPR technology to be a force multiplier. It's helping provide objective evidence and bringing it to the right person, hopefully in the right point in time. So, by being able to solve crime, we're able to build trust in the community, making sure that not only are we protecting the community, but we're doing it in an objective way. So, we do have, sorry, we do have a whole host of products. We will be talking about Falcons today, but they all work similarly. They all detect, capture evidence, decode, right, making sense of the haystack, finding the needle in the haystack, and then delivering it to you directly to your phone, your tablet, your laptop. This is what we're talking about. It's the Falcon camera, and it works, and this is how it works. Excuse me. I'm dealing with a cough here. But let's pretend your car is driving down and passes one of these cameras. It takes stock of two things. Number one, the license plate, and number two, the vehicular fingerprint. So, the color, the vehicle make, let's say if it has a rack in the back for bikes, all of that is inputted into the system. We use machine learning technology to take stock of that. So, it's an infrastructure-free technology, so you don't have to put wires down. But let's say, you know, it's a, it's a stolen vehicle that's coming into the area. It will provide a real-time alert. It can provide alerts if there's someone with a felony warrant, or to a missing person, or a person of interest. So, this is 24/7 coverage, meaning that we will help you maintain your system, but we will also be able to make sure that you're getting data in real time, objective information in real time, to make serious decisions. So, this is what it, what it looks like in the system. This is what a real-time alert can look like. This can be a text message, an email, or an in-app alert. And here's an example of someone who is of interest because they're related to a catalytic converter theft. So, this is someone, and someone in the police department would receive an alert looking like this. Or, this is how it would look like to search through the system. So, if you're investigating for a homicide suspect, you can search through our system for vehicular make, body type, all that good stuff that I just mentioned. So, I just wanted to quickly clarify what this is not and what this is. This is not facial recognition technology. We are not collecting biometric information or sensitive information. This is not going to be used for tracking speed or, you know, parking violations. We strongly believe as a company that the data belongs to you all. So, we don't own it. You guys do. We just have an obligation to help store it in an AWS cloud, and we hard delete it after 30 days. So, again, we specialize in gathering evidence of vehicles and not people. Again, making sure that there are, there are accurate alerts in real time. So, again, the technology, it's proactive, right? You're getting real-time alerts when there's a stolen or wanted vehicle entering your jurisdiction. It's investigative. You're able to have real data, able to increase clearance rates, and it's a deterrent, because you will now be part of a broader network within the state of California, making sure that you are indeed able to solve some of these serious cases along the way. And we do believe in being a trusted partner. So, there is an indefinitely available audit trail. So, you can't just go into the system to browse around. You need to have a serious reason and a case number. And again, we don't want to, we want to make sure that there's real accountability to this mechanism. This is not connected to a third-party database. Essentially, if, let's say the DMV is hacked, they're not going to have access to our system. We are end-to-end encrypted and manage our own system. I did want to also just emphasize, this is technologies compliant with SB 34 and SB 54. So, we are not sharing out-of-state, complying to California law, but also we, this is not going to be used for investigations involving immigration, reproductive rights. All of that is codified within your policy, but also it's state law. So, we're making sure that this is compliant with those specific two laws that I just mentioned, making sure that, you know, this is being used for its very serious purposes, right? And I just wanted to make sure that I'm highlighting our transparency portal, something that separates us from other competitors. We believe that this technology should be known to the public. It should be transparent, and we do provide this as a free service, a transparency portal. This is an example coming out of Vallejo, California. Again, a very exemplary jurisdiction, if you will, but this is essentially showing But this is essentially showcasing what this, what this technology is being used for. It also publicizes their, their LPR policy at the bottom. And as you can see, it also informs the public. Who are they actually working with? What police departments are they consenting to to have some kind of sharing agreement? And that is completely within your discretion and according to your policy. And if you see at the bottom, it also shares information, let's say, on number of cars that were stolen, right? Like this, this can actually make, we can actually make sure that the public knows, hey, this is the return on this investment. And this is how this technology is shaping the landscape to make sure that we are holding folks accountable, but in, in a very serious way. And we could quantify that information. Again, making sure the public knows this is another tool in the toolbox. And yes, this is a subscription service. So this is exactly what it would look like. And we will make sure that it's maintained, upgrading the software along the way. This is a deployment map. I wanted to quickly share with you all. My colleague here can speak to it a little bit. But we did want to make sure that folks know there was an effort to make sure that the entrances and exits of the city were well-covered. TJ, did you want to speak to this or?
Yeah, thanks Jonathan. I think you hit a nail on the head there. That's exactly what I was going to cover is. The locations of the devices were not based off of any kind of crime trends or specific neighborhoods. We worked diligently with PD as well as our solution consultants who have executive experience in mapping out these locations. And the locations are all just based on the ingress and egress locations around the city.
Didn't mean to steal your thunder there.
No worries, no worries.
So I, I did want to share a little bit more about some of the work that we've been able to do in California. We're in over four hundred law enforcement agencies, including San Francisco, our new partner here, California Highway Patrol, Riverside and Beverly Hills. I wanted to quickly share about San Rafael where three suspects. In a brutal assault were arrested through our LPR technology. On June eighteenth, officers responded to a report of an assault in Canal Neighborhood. The victims reported that three suspects beat him with brass knuckles before fleeing, fleeing in a vehicle. Investigators obtained a possible license plate, queried their LPRs for the vehicle, discovering that it had been in the area around that time of the crime. So the officer spotted that vehicle on August sixth, initiated a traffic stop and detained the three occupants. And the search yielded multiple weapons and the occupants were arrested on multiple charges, including assault with a deadly weapon. We have a different case study here coming out of San Marino where they had a seventy percent decrease in residential burglaries after increasing the number of cameras by thirty-six percent. And they saw a nineteen percent decrease in part one crimes. I can go on and on. I just wanted to quickly share. One of, one of the last ones, but I did want to quickly hit on, you know, officers responded to a report of a fire in a dry field in Yucia. Shortly after, the officials apprehended two teens connected to an alleged arson. So on August twenty-fifth, the LPR system alerted the officers of the car's location and the officials arrested a seventeen-year-old driver reportedly involved in starting the fire. And then September ninth, a second eighteen-year-old suspect was arrested by Mendocino County Sheriff's Office after being connected to two armed car break-ins. So essentially this technology was able to help them investigate, but making sure that there wasn't a repeat offense of this type of nature. And then we have a long-time crime reduction coming out of Vacaville, California. I apologize if I, I don't mean to mispronounce some of these names. I, I am from the East Coast. But there was a thirty-three, thirty-three percent decrease in reported vehicle thefts, thirty-five percent increase in arrests related to vehicle thefts. Essentially showing, you know, that once the word got out that they had LPR systems, they, they saw a quick reduction in those types of offenses. And I always end with our first Amber Alert that was solved out of Georgia where we were founded. A, a mom was walking her baby down the sidewalk, down the street. On a stroller where two strangers literally came out of a van, ripped her babies out of her arm. And fled and they were really on their way to leave out of state. At the time, she was able to tell enough about the vehicle. It was a red Honda with a damaged back tire. So at twelve thirty-three, an Amber Alert was issued. Through that description, a search was conducted through the Flock Safety System. And they were able to locate a vehicle that was on its way out of state. And, you know, in Georgia, we're so prominent that we were actually able to trace and track down, making sure that we could actually, they could make a safe stop. And it's a, a safe arrest. So by five o'clock, there was a felony stop and arrest and by six o'clock, the baby was reunited with their mom. I share that story and I always end with that story because I think it just shows the importance of having a regional network that cooperates and works together. In that particular case, you know, you don't always have a license plate number. Sometimes you have enough of a description. So I am more than happy to answer any questions. Just wanted to share that there is strength in numbers and hopefully we can be a reliable partner here to make sure we can keep the community safe. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, does counsel have any questions? Yes. Counsel member Castellano.
Okay, I have a few questions. Thank you. I appreciate the thoroughness of the presentation and of your work chief on the matter. Let's see. Just a quick question. This is, and I really appreciate the policy that you brought forward. So thank you for that. On the policy in terms of section forty-six point three, point one D. Does that mean that that's the section ensuring procedures are followed for system operators? Does that mean that there will be like a secure sign-in for users of the system?
Yes, each individual user that's once properly trained will be given their own specific sign-in to the system. That will help with the audit of the system if anything should occur. We can tell who was signed in, who did what searches.
Perfect. Thank you. And just, you know, I did a quick Google. What are the, what are the problems that have happened with the Flock camera systems? And so that was one of them. So I appreciate that you thought forward or, you know, potential problems. And I do think that the policy covers a lot of the things that have happened in other places. And so related to that, I was curious if other jurisdictions in our area have a policy crafted as thoroughly as the one before us today?
I have not reviewed the sheriff's department's.
Okay.
Policy and that's the only jurisdiction I know locally that has a camera so far.
Okay. I still have in my mind the police auditor report. So just kind of thinking about how like regional collaboration around policies could be useful. Thank you. Let's see. I think that, oh, let's see. And I appreciate the mention from Jonathan Paz about the immigration law. And I was just curious, if state law changes, you know, as, as we know, Humboldt County has a sanctuary ordinance. If state law changes, that would potentially permit someone to be tracked via, for immigration reasons. Would this be brought back before us or would that just be sort of like rolled into the program?
I, I think the policy is clear that it won't be used for that reason, to track anyone or to share information for immigration purposes. If I'm the chief at that time, if something gets rolled back, it's not going to change the. The reasons why we want and need the system. I still wouldn't report that information for that purpose. It's not, we have more crime to fight than, than that.
Thank you. And then, let's see. I'm just kind of curious about the cost over time, you know, in, in terms of the ongoing cost for the city. Cause, you know, I know. You know, we, I sign up for apps or whatever and they're cheap the first year, but more expensive as the years go on. So I was just kind of curious about that.
So currently right now, we're looking at a two-year agreement. The initial cost is, I believe, seventy-four thousand dollars for installation and the first year of monitoring and maintenance. And then the second year is sixty thousand dollars. If it gets to the point where it can't fit within our budget, or if it gets to the point at which it's not within staff's purview under the procurement policy. Which is a hundred thousand dollars, that purchase would have to come back to council anyway. But as of right now, it's a, it's a two-year agreement that we're looking at.
I, thank you. And I was just maybe curious to hear from the folks from Flock, do y'all plan to maintain relatively stable rates?
You don't have to raise your hand, Jonathan, even though you're from Georgia.
No worries. I, I was just trying to unmute. I think I was disallowed. But no, I, I mean, we absolutely do not foresee any raises in costs over our lifespan as a company. We've only had to do that once. And that was during a global pandemic where there were supply chain issues, but we do not foresee that in the future. Now, if you do lock in for a longer contract, we can absolutely guarantee that your price will be locked. So that's an incentive to maybe carry us for longer, but, but we do appreciate your budgetary, you know, constraints.
Thanks and good job pitching. I think, sorry, oh, just, this is just sort of me. So, you know, if the county has a system and let's say hypothetically, the county has cameras already at the periphery of Eureka. You know. Would that make our system redundant or how might this system be useful within the bounds of Eureka?
I can tell you the county doesn't have cameras near the ingress and egress points of the city of Eureka. They're covering other locations throughout the county that are more concerned to them right now. The system will be used to ensure that those either coming into the city in a stolen vehicle or in a vehicle that's wanted in a crime. Or those that commit crimes within the city. And we have a vehicle description. We'll be able to better monitor where they've gone or maybe where they've came from and where they go. Hopefully given our detectives and officers the ability to make a quicker arrest and solve the crime a lot quicker. You know, I was thinking about it right before I, after I wrote everything and that's why I added the piece about the hit and runs. We had a hit and run on Broadway at fourteenth that we still haven't been able to solve. And I know that family really would like to have that solved. I, I know what the description of that vehicle is. It was nighttime. It was in the rain, but we do have enough surveillance video and eyewitness video to get the description. And I think this would have been an important factor in that case and potentially had been solved by now, or at least pointed us in a better direction to get a lead. So that's the kind of things, one of the many things the camera system can be used for within the city itself to help solve crimes. It could be even a non-injury hit and run, traffic collision or something like that, that we could use the system for to get people the reimbursement and hold others accountable for their actions within the city.
Thank you. Counsel member Bauer.
Me, I think my first question is for Mr. Paz. And it's about the end-to-end encryption. Having had my credit card, my debit cards stolen or, you know, used. I'm always worried about our personal data safety and I appreciate that you have end-to-end encryption. But being a kind of a tech, technology luddite, like how safe is that? And I, and I say that maybe the question really is, has a company with this kind of tech ever been hacked? How about that?
Absolutely not. We go a step further and we are SOC two compliant. And we, we just, we want to make sure that this is the highest form of protection of the data.
A second question, kind of related. Does the technology have the ability for facial recognition, that kind of thing, beyond what we're, we're talking about?
I'm happy to answer that. I just wanted to give my colleague here the opportunity. I think he raised his hand.
Okay.
Uh, thanks. The other thing I just wanted to include there was that none of your personal data is actually being stored. So the only data that would actually be kept, which is your data, would be your vehicle fingerprint. So we'd only know that you had, you know, not even you specifically, but there was a capture of a red Honda. The most data that would be shared, that would be, I guess affiliated with you would be potentially your license plate, which is owned by the state technically anyways, correct? So not saying that there, you know, that there is a concern there, but there is no personal information being stored within our system as well.
Okay.
Yeah. And if I could add to that, so your registration information is not attached to your license plate in this system. It is just a photo of a license plate. For the agency to garner that information, then I have to have a legal right to search for the photo, get the photo. Then I have to take that license plate, run it through a completely independent system. The California Department of Motor Vehicles under the right to know, need to know, to pull that information up. So if the system was compromised, all they're going to get is the picture of your license plate. They have no registration information, your personal address, name, anything like that attached to any data that's going up into their cloud system.
That's super helpful. Thank you. One, one quick other question. Section four-two-six-point-five accountability and safeguards. Item A says, all non-law enforcement requests for access and like my light bulb went off, like wait a minute, what does that mean? Because in four-two-six-point-eight, it says only law enforcement and prosecuting agencies can access the data. So is that referring to like a DA or something in that, in that section? I just want to make sure that it's only law enforcement that has access to the data.
So it, yeah, can you?
Yeah, four-two-six-point-five A. I think it's just referring to DAs, I would imagine, or a prosecutor. No?
So I guess without looking at that silver code. Anyone can make a request for the information, but I think that's where it falls in the, for a PRA standpoint, regulations put on, on how that information is shared within other policies that we have and laws that allows us to protect that information.
So yeah, I mean, if. We have different laws that have changed for requests for personnel, for other things like that and stuff. If there's something that by law we are required to report as a part of an investigation, I think that that may be something that could come up with another agency. That's not necessarily law enforcement.
But then it, it contradicts four-two-six-point-eight. So that would be my concern.
We can review that. And bring it back. I mean, my, it's very similar to. I mean, we have investigations that things aren't disclosable until after those investigations are over. And when those investigations are over, there's requirements to report on them. So that may be it, but if council decides to, you know, hold off on this and have us bring back clarification for that weekend.
Okay, thank you.
And this is a draft policy that it's as close to being done as it can be done, but it's still a living document that has not been submitted to LexiPaul for be placed in our policy. So we still have time to make adjustments for this.
Just a clarifying question about what council member Bauer was just asking. So with body cams, can those be a PRA'd as well?
Yes.
So this, is this similar as far as how that works or no? I mean, obviously, I know that, that the body cam, sometimes we have to wait till the end of the investigation.
Which would be the same case here. I, I find it, if it's a part of an overall investigation, there's other things in that investigation that I think would be more sensitive than just the license plate, the picture of the license plate. As was stated before, it's just the license plate. It doesn't have any personal information on it. It doesn't have anything like that. So as it relates to this camera, it's basically a picture of a license plate in a vehicle.
Well, and in thirty days, would that information even be available anymore?
If we had to use it as a part of an investigation and it became part of evidence, it would still be in there.
But it wouldn't be available on the site. It would be available on the information we've downloaded and attached to the criminal case file that we're keeping for prosecution. It would not be attached on the site. It would be deleted from the site in thirty days.
I see. Thank you. Are there questions? Counsel member Molton?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief and Flock folks for the thorough presentation. They answered a lot of the questions that I had already. I'm glad you mentioned that there's new, new ways of crime and new technology to solve those crimes. But also with those new technologies comes with new challenges, some things that are just being shaken out. So some things that stick out to me. If, if we are looking for a number for a license plate from Mendocino, for example, they have a number up. They want us to, you know, look out for this person in case they come into our area. Doesn't that give us access to? What do we get from that case? Do we just get a, hey, just look for this number? Do we get a look for this number because? Do we get a case number? Do we get something to go along with that?
Yeah. So in the policy, it says any agency requesting information or data out of our system must supply us with a case number. And then a short synopsis of the reason why they're asking for the information. What's the case? What's the type of investigation attached to the reason they're looking for that? And all that goes into consideration when either I or my designated makes a decision whether or not we're going to search and then release that information to the agency.
Okay. Where are the, where are the servers located? Perhaps? Okay. Um, where are the, uh, where are the servers located perhaps? One of you fellows can tell me where the physical server is located?
Uh, there, so we, we have our own IT uh, department based out of Georgia, but we do partner with Amazon. So uh, wherever those Amazon servers are also located, so Georgia and in partnership with Amazon.
So the, of course, if EPD owns the information that, and the city of Eureka through EPD uh, owns the information that we gather here. And we can control whether people access that or not, but what if that information is subpoenaed by somebody from Amazon directly?
Sorry, just to understand that directly, um, you're asking if someone who works at Amazon is requesting that data or?
If law enforcement in another state or in our state or anywhere at all uh, got a warrant to ask Amazon for information from Eureka. Circumventing the EPD, the city of Eureka and your company itself, going directly after the storage that is now in a fourth party's hands. What's to stop that from happening?
Okay, yeah, so just to understand, this is a hypothetical that someone else is trying to subpoena a private company from a public entity, the city of Eureka, um, who are working in conjunction with us in our servers. Is that accurate?
Well, in this case, yeah, they would be subpoenaing the private company because this has happened before that Amazon has had data on their servers. And that somebody went after that data. They couldn't get it from the people who collected the data, the people who were storing the data, but they could get it from Amazon.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you for clarifying that. No, so we have a contractual obligation to um, honor the term of the contract, meaning the, the hard deletion happens after thirty days regardless of whatever pending litigation is happening. That data we consider to be yours and, and we're helping monitor and help preserve it. Um, but we have a contractual obligation to hard delete after thirty days.
I see. So you don't.
Our contractual obligation is to you. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I, I totally um, appreciate this kind of technology, how useful it can be. I feel like we have to act, the, or just act as though, um, you know, we are acting in good faith and EPD is following the rules and you're all following the rules. And when we write this law that it's going to, you know, be implemented in the way that we intended, as long as we're very thorough. My concern is about the data storage offsite going into these other hands. Um, not that it wouldn't be secure, but that we don't have any control over whether or not those folks are following the law or following our, uh, our desires based on um, the data that's collected through our systems. Are we then potentially complicit in some of the, the scary things that you, uh, you pointed out? Uh, possibilities there if the data gets out of our control. Chief, are you aware of any of the lawsuits that have been brought up in other cities in California against the flock cameras?
I am not.
Neither am I. Um, I was wondering, maybe this is a question for City Attorney Luna, if this would be an appropriate job for our uh, citizen oversight on police practices board, given that this would be a police practice going forward, for them to look into past litigation or potential, uh, the potential for litigation against EPD or the city. And basically take a, a citizen's eye view of this thoroughly digging into um, possible trouble spots. And specifically that the, I appreciate all the known potential concerns that are addressed in this policy. That um, looking at those, that they are addressing those concerns and anything else that they might come up with based on other municipalities' experiences.
I certainly think that if it's the council's desire to have more in-depth oversight over the policy and the laws and the potential areas for concern. Uh, that the cop board could be a place for that. Um, and you could also direct, you know, you could direct further investigation uh, from my office. And I do know that the laws that were mentioned by Mr. Paz, um, thirty-four and fifty-four are fairly new, just in the last couple of years. And so while there has been some litigation, uh, I believe that uh, EFF sued in twenty twenty, but that litigation didn't in fact reach the merits of the kind of thing that you're talking about. It was disposed of on procedural grounds, but um, you know, council has those options open to them. Once we get to that point uh, with this item.
Would you say those specific laws again, just for my reference?
Oh, thirty-four and fifty-four, but those are the bill numbers. So if you want the actual code sections, I will have to get those for you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I just want to look more into that specifically. Thank you.
I, I can also share with the council, the uh, governor's directives on those two uh, bills from last year. With the AG's office, very informative. So I'm happy to send those to you.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Going, going back to my colleague's question here, I think what, what I would like to hear then is the example being that if someone from out of state, let's say Georgia, came to California, drove here in their car and were seeking medical care, i.e. an abortion, then if they couldn't get what they requested from EPD, could they then subpoena what they're trying to find through one of the servers located in another state? Yeah, is that, I, I think maybe that was the question. That was an answer I didn't hear. They can't.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to jump in, Chief. So just to, just to be clear, so you're saying it, it's just, these are, these hypotheticals, I want to make sure I'm.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, they're hypotheticals because I haven't heard of it taking place. It's just something to consider.
Yeah, so can you please just repeat?
Can I try to summarize this for him?
Yes, please.
Understand what you're asking.
Okay.
So Jonathan, if someone serves a subpoena on Flock in Georgia for information on your servers that we have obtained here, the data we've obtained here, will Flock honor that subpoena and give them the information? Would Amazon honor the same subpoena and give them the information or would it come back to us to deal with as it's our data?
Yeah, to, to the best of my knowledge, um, our legal team always treats the data um, as, from an ownership perspective. So the, the data belongs to you. Uh, I'm happy to follow up if there's uh, something maybe more, on a, on a more direct basis. Uh, since we haven't been subpoenaed or like, Amazon hasn't been subpoenaed in this hypothetical related to Flock. Uh, but we always have an obligation to you because this data belongs to you. Uh, we help monitor, we help delete, uh, we help maintain the system, protect it, make sure it's compliant, private, secure. Um, but absolutely the data belongs to you and we have not, without the consent and permission, uh, transferred data where it, it, it doesn't belong.
Thank you for that. And then uh, something I'm curious about and I think it's kind of touched on, but it's not explicit in itself. Just trying to find it here.
I think my colleague also wanted to chime in here.
Yeah, I believe Amazon works off of the same bylaws as well, where the, and the data does not belong to Amazon as well. So um, from my understanding, the subpoena would have to go directly to EPD, um, because they are the sole owner of that data.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then are hot list hits required uh, to be verified by a human secondary?
Yes, the policy states that if a vehicle plate on the hot list is, you get a hit or notification to the dispatch center computer. Then yeah, they need to confirm that the plate is accurate on the car that, that the hit came from and then that the vehicle is still wanted within the wanted system uh, within the state of California, barring any accident circumstances that the officer may run into at the time of trying to identify the plate.
Okay, and, and the reason I asked for that confirmation is because it's uh, yeah, again, that's why I was trying to find it, yeah. Four, four two six point four operations, F1 verification. Uh, an officer must receive confirmation from a communications dispatcher or other department computer device. So it doesn't sound that it's required so much as it is, I, I don't know what that secondary device would look like or what it may be.
It would be the mobile computers within the computer that are hooked, or within our cars that are hooked directly to the state system. So we can run the license plate from our vehicle. Uh, when we do that, if it was a stolen vehicle, we would get a Rick Redd hit on our vehicle computer saying that the vehicle is stolen, which is the exact same system that the communications dispatcher were running through.
Okay. And then this may have been touched on earlier and again, I'm, I'm curious just for the explicit answer, uh, considering that the data may contain public information. We've been told it's not subject to public review. But that if there is a case pursued in this, there would be a case number associated with that. And so would that case number then be open to the public?
Under any normal release guidelines by law, eventually it could be once the case is adjudicated.
Okay. And then going to the audit for uh, four point two, or four two six point seven. There's an audit of ten browsing queries over the course of twelve months. Why is it, why is ten the hard number rather than a fixed percentage? Even if it's two to three percent?
This is just the, um, a random audit done by department liaison or the department designee when it comes to in charge of the LPR system. Uh, the audit is continuous every time and any type of inquiry is made. So we can always go back if there's a complaint about something, go back and review that. Um, but when it comes to the audit, then it's just a random number that is chosen so that we can go back and choose ten different cases, ten different inquiries to make sure the information was filled in correctly each year to report back on or to at least have inside our department information. So if something's not going what, the right way, somebody's not using it the right way, then we can address those concerns. Much like we do our property audit every year, we pick random case numbers and then go through and check to see if those property items are still in the proper location and still accountable for. We couldn't do all hundred thousand pieces of property that we obtain and have in our possession. So we pick a, a random number and cases and review those.
And then it says here, uh, almost right up at the top, four two six point three point one. Only trained sworn officers, crime analyst, analysts, et cetera, are allowed access. How many people are we looking at potentially within the department having access to the system?
It's a valuable tool. Um, I would expect all the sworn officers to have access to it, our dispatchers to have access to it, our forensic analysts, evidence technicians. And then potentially our criminal uh, investigation unit administrative assistant.
Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Um, I was just taking a look at the, the ACLU has some specific recommendations uh, for Flock that um, I wasn't aware of and until now, so I apologize for that. But one of them is around, and so this is something, if it maybe does go to the, if we do recommend that it goes is reviewed by the cop board, that it might be a recom, a recommendation to also have them kind of review the ACLU's specific recommendations around it. Um, but one of them, some of them were doing okay, I think, by the ACLU standards. But one of them is just that in New Hampshire, all data has to be deleted if it's not related to any crime after three minutes. So there's the possibility within that technology. Um, you know, and they, they say the worst approach is the no longer than thirty days, according to, you know, because that's, that's the Flock standard, I guess. Um, and that there is also a potential seventy-two hour approach. Um, I get, and I guess I'm just curious if anyone, um, either the chief or the Flock has kind of reviewed the ACLU's recommendations.
I have not looked at the ACLU recommendations, however, I will say that uh, most of us in this room probably go on two-week, three-week vacations every year. If your house is burglarized during that two or three weeks and by the time you get back and report it to us and we get it to an investigator, that thirty days is going to be a nice timeframe to have to go back and try to find that vehicle that we have a description of from your surveillance camera leaving your house. So that's why thirty days is used generally across the board as retention of evidence, is because it gives us investigative time to look for, investigate and find the data we need.
Yeah, and just to build on that point, uh, we do consider the ACLU to be friends. Uh, we may have some disagreements, but they are serious thought leaders in this case. You know, they, they're of the school of thought that, you know, uh, it should be quickly deleted. What we've found is that um, thirty days is the sweet spot, um, because again, just the nature, it's the, the balance between right privacy and being able to practically solve crime, being able to practically solve and investigate. There's schools of thought that think that it should be longer than thirty days or it should be less. Reality is that uh, you'd want to make sure you give uh, your, you know, your, your police department enough time to be able to pursue something. So that is a slight disagreement we have with them, um, but we, we, I do appreciate the sense of the question.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloach and then Bauer.
Yeah, um, first, thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. Um, and I want to acknowledge before I uh, start asking questions. That I understand the value, the, the concept of the value in this and um, and I forget what the term is, a something multiplier.
Force multiplier.
Force multiplier. Yeah, this idea that it really gives you, empowers our EPD to really pursue things. Most of my concerns do not center around EPD. Um, uh, my concerns center on Flock itself. Um, and more specifically this technology. Um, and uh, and there is, and I appreciate uh, Councilmember Castellano bringing up uh, New Hampshire and one of the things they talked about. There's a thirteen-page white paper that the ACLU has issued about um, these, this type of technology and specifically Flock. And so I think my concerns mostly center around some of that. Um, I do know, um, New Hampshire does have this policy. I thought it was three days. I didn't realize it was three minutes, but either way I can see, uh, Chief, your point. I think I have a couple of questions. One is, um, so the NCIC, the FBI's National Crime Information Center, this is, you guys have a a sharing agreement with them. Um, and, and that's also in here inside of our, our own policy. And they don't have any such uh, thirty-day storage or anything like that because it's no longer with Flock. And so it can live interminably inside that system. Um, and uh, and so I think that that's an important thing just for us to know that that information does in another iteration, it seems.
Can I, can I answer to that?
Yeah, please do.
The data doesn't go from our cameras to NCIC or to the national database of criminal activity. NCIC is the hub for all information that is entered for crimes that is disseminated to states or local jurisdictions. So if you report your car stolen, it gets uploaded to the NCIC computer. If you report your laptop stolen, that serial number goes into that database for a national search database. So it's just your license plate being entered into there through a crime report. We don't share the data backwards. They would only put that in there. It would be into the hot list. If your car got hit by one of the LPR cameras, it would come back as being a stolen car. And that data is in there until that car is recovered, until an agency removes that from NCIC. However, it doesn't go the other way where the data from the cameras goes to NCIC.
Thank you, Chief, um, for clarifying. I do understand that, but thank you for clarifying what I was saying, um, since I was not clear. Um, I think that my concern though with that is so under four two six point three. Um, and it says, you know, may be used to gather, um, the, for the options on why this data can be uh, requested and gathered by other law enforcement agencies. Um, such as active warrants, homeland security or electronic surveillance. So I, again, I think my concerns aren't really EPD per se so much as um, this idea that this is kind of creating, and I, and I apologize if this sounds sort of like a alarmist. I don't mean it that way, but this sort of almost like surveillance net um, aspect that I have, I think, a little bit of a concern about. Something else, uh, you know, speaking to the ability to track vehicles uh, across, you know, state lines. And again, this may not, it, if another state is looking for a vehicle for another reason and that state, you know, and that's popping up here, that we're kind of helping with that. And I think, um, and if we're talking about some, you know, horrible criminal, um, this kind of makes sense to me. Um, but when we're getting into differences in state policies um, and what they consider warrant behavior or other things, I, I know this was brought up by other council members. And this is something still being discussed by this room court, so. But you know, like for instance, Iowa and Idaho, um, you know, is considering, you know, interstate travel for purposes of abortion as human trafficking. They're trying to look at that as a law. So I just think that there's I, I'm cur, I'm concerned about potential and again, this doesn't really speak to EPD's use because I don't see you guys use that. And so my concerns really aren't with our officers or with our own leadership. It's more of a concern about these little spots inside of Flock's policies perhaps themselves. I, I was curious too, so all cars are tracked for thirty days and then all of that's deleted if it's considered nothing was important.
It's all deleted no matter what.
But it's all vehicles.
It's all, it's the vehicles captured by the cameras, yes.
Okay. Um, and then how far can EPD's searches go? Like, what, what is your it's not just for inside Eureka, like what is your accessibility? Like say, um, you know, a crime is committed here, you're looking for this vehicle. Like, is there any limit on that or like, how, how far can that ding? Could it be Odell or Nevada or like, how does that work?
Yeah, exactly. Uh, we would have the same capability as any other agency to reach out to a, a law enforcement jurisdiction that has Flock cameras. If we believe that a vehicle of interest to have a crime in Eureka. a vehicle of interest of a crime in Eureka has traveled back to the Bay Area to see if we can capture any information from their agencies. But again, I'd have to provide them, I'm sure their policy is close to ours, is with case number and the reason why I'm asking for that information, then it would be up to them to share that information with us.
Okay, um, meaning Flock or meaning?
The agency itself.
The agency itself.
Reach out to agencies alone.
This is because of California's tight privacy laws though, right? This isn't, this isn't necessarily because of, so the, this would be because of the, the laws of our own state that other states don't necessarily have.
Flock's data is owned by each agency or neighborhood organization that has the cameras, that own the cameras. Flock doesn't own any of the information, so I can't make a request to Flock for information for a crime or a vehicle check out of San Francisco. I have to contact San Francisco PD because they are the owners of the information and like our policy, I'm sure theirs is, they're the only ones that can release that to us.
Yeah, thank you. Cause I think that's what I was wondering about is then what protects privacy then for people is the policies inside of our, our state for the most part, um, is what determines that, is that we are beholden to, or excuse me, you as law enforcement officers, you have very specific protocols and things that you need to follow to access that, but that wouldn't necessarily be true of other states. This is because this is California policy?
Every state probably has a policy. Every agency probably has a policy. They're all probably different in some aspects by what state law requires. So I can't answer to what's on the outside of California.
No, I appreciate that. So, and I, and I am not a legal scholar, but the reason why I'm asking this is because we have, um, tighter, more restrictive laws around privacy in California. And so why I'm asking that is because of this kind of interstate sharing that can happen is I'm wondering about, uh, say Nevada has a more lax policy around this. And so what they're requesting from California, how does that work if they're requesting something that would violate our own laws in California but doesn't violate their laws in Nevada?
Again, it would fall under the request made to the agency and with the information provided within the request for the agency or myself to make a determination on if it fits our criteria and our policy for release of information. If it didn't, then the information wouldn't be released.
Thank you, Chief. Um, Attorney Luna, can I put you on the spot with that last question?
Of course.
I'm putting you on the spot with that question. When states have different incompatible policies around privacy.
Yeah. So I haven't done a nationwide survey of policy, of privacy laws. I do suspect that California's privacy laws around this sort of thing are more robust than many others. It, it appears to me that Flock has paid quite a bit of attention to ensuring that with our information, they are going to be in compliance with our state law. And so I'm happy to hear that. That said, I haven't reviewed a contract from Flock. And so moving forward, that would be the next step that I would like to see for the city is to review that contract. It hasn't come to my desk yet to make sure that any of the potential holes in privacy that the council appears to be pretty unanimously concerned about, uh, are tightened up as, as much as we can tighten them up through that contract process. And again, we aren't at that stage in this item yet, but if that's the will of the council, that can be directed, uh, after we take public comment.
And just to be clear, we, we are not at that point in the contract. We've received a proposal. We don't have a draft contract. We've talked terms and we've had discussions about a contract, but there is no current contract that's been drafted.
Councilmember Bauer first?
Could I, could I, uh, address really quickly what was just asked?
Sure.
Um, I, I think just to, like, the, the short of it is that, uh, we honor, um, well, we, we're compliant with state law, but we honor what, um, other agencies have agreed with each other. So if it's outside of the state of California and like the sites like Texas communicating with Arizona, um, and they have a partnership, then that is a partnership that we can honor, but we cannot break state law. And in California, we cannot, that data cannot be shared outside of the state. So I just wanted to really emphasize our compliance with your state's, your state's law, um, your jurisdiction, your, your set policy. Um, that's what we are able to do is make sure that, um, we are compliant and honoring the terms of our agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Well, um, I had a, a quick, um, idea for the policy that I don't see is an annual report. Like, what has this done for this, for, for our citizens, you know? How has this made us safer? Just, I mean, it could be a part of our, your annual report, Chief, you know, on what's going on in the city, but that would be helpful. And just to clarify, the, um, agenda says to authorize the city manager and the police chief to enter to, to your contract. So we're not doing that then today.
That's up to, that's up to council. That's what staff's recommendation is, but that's up to council.
Okay. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
Hopefully one last question or, uh, theme, theme of maybe a couple of questions. Um, let's see, some folks are able to buy Flock cameras privately. Do y'all sell Flock cameras to private individuals in the state of California?
Oh, looks like I kind of mute myself now. Sorry about that. Uh, thanks again for that question. Uh, so we do sell to like HOAs, um, or other businesses as well. Uh, and they do not have access to any kind of external data if that's, if that's kind of what your question was. If you don't mind me asking, kind of what were, what was the depth of that question?
Well, I, I guess, uh, I saw South Carolina kind of, uh, put, basically put a moratorium or, or, um, maybe had some issue, put a moratorium on new installations and ordered a safety and compliance review of all Flock cameras across the state. Um, you know, and one of the things folks are doing is creating a requirement for like a permitting process, you know, in, in terms of private use of Flock cameras. And so, um, I guess I'm just wondering, uh, I'm aware of that now. And so I'm, I'm just kind of curious about, um, how that, though it's not in our current legit, you know, what's before us today, it seems like that may be an important part of, uh, what, what we want to consider.
Yeah. So just kind of to reiterate that, so like HOAs, uh, or commercial, uh, businesses, um, they do purchase our products. Those products are going to be aimed generally on their private properties. For example, a Lowe's or a Home Depot, um, where they would hit, station these cameras in their parking lots and therefore they can help reduce crime of theft in their retail theft and things like that. Uh, and then that, just like, you know, uh, Eureka PD's data, uh, that data would belong exclusively to them. And then they would have the option to share that data with Eureka PD if they chose to do so as well.
Right. Or potentially anyone else they might want to share it with. I don't know. Just curious. Um, and then just curi- kind of before you answer that, sorry, I'm not trying to be facetious, but, um, I think the question is, um, it's basically up to cities to decide whether they want to have permitting around private use of Flock cameras or not, basically, or cities or government jurisdictions.
Um, I mean, that's a great question. I can get back to on that. I have not, I'm not a part of the commercial team, so I'm not, I don't, I can't give you a definitive answer there. Um, but.
I think.
Go ahead, Jonathan. Sorry.
I think SB thirty-four, I think, provides some guidance. I, I think that's certainly within your, 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 your power to. I'm sure there's legal, legal scholars can, can follow up.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez and then Councilmember Moulton.
Thank you. Uh, I, I, I think it was alluded to earlier by, uh, Councilmember Moulton about having this reviewed by, uh, the Citizen Oversight on Police Practices Board. And I'm curious what that process might look like because at least as long as I've been on, on this council, things come up. We haven't sent anything down. So.
It can, yeah, it, it can go either way. Um, our next meeting is the end of this month? Oh, thank you. There Shannon. Yes. And we're actually, uh, going to be meeting to discuss the agenda. So if that's something council, uh, wishes to happen, we can have it, um, put onto the agenda at the end of this month. I think it's the last Thursday of the month?
This month, it's the second to last.
Second to last. Tuesday.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Um, since you brought it up, does Flock, um, or have you ever participated in data sharing between states for the purposes of prosecuting people for seeking reproductive health that you're aware of?
No. Let, let me rephrase. Absolutely not.
But if, uh, two states had Flock systems and it was within their laws that they could do that, uh, would you, it sounds like that would be, you'd be treating their data the way that they want their data to be treated?
Yeah, I'm just, uh, I'm not sure if I'm going to run down a whole set of hypotheticals that hasn't happened. And, uh, it's not something that is within our purview right now.
But to your knowledge, that hasn't happened?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. So with, with that, we will open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate this time. I would like to urge you all today to please deny this request, uh, to approve this contract based on a draft policy and, uh, no actual contract. Uh, this will allocate roughly seventy-five thousand dollars plus admin costs and another sixty thousand dollars just within the first two years. And as is a subscription, it'll continue to eat away at costs. Um, to, I do believe you guys brought up a lot of wonderful points, so I won't keep on reiterating those topics, but a few things that were mentioned is that this is a reactive solution to policing the city of Eureka. And I believe some of these funds or time can go into proactive solutions to help our city. We are a small community, so Eureka residents will effectively be the most surveilled. Um, as you saw on the map, all wards are within the surveilled part of the section. And, sorry, I draw down a lot of notes. There was a lot of conversation going on, but, um, mostly to the point that, yes, we're all worried about our privacy and this community does respect its right to privacy. But most importantly, we do see issues. I believe there are a few issues brought up with the Flock system and sharing of that information. I've worked a lot with speaking with vendors and sales pitches, and I heard a lot of, I believe that to be the case, this made best practices to our best knowledge. Um, but I do not believe Councilmember Moulton's question was effectively answered. Um, although it was considered a hypothetical, I think there was no direct address to the sharing of that information based off that, once again, hypothetical. Um, I, I believe there needs to be, and there were, uh, addressed to be more concerns from other citizens. Maybe I'm the only one here willing to spend their night at a council meeting, but there are many citizens who are concerned with this. So I believe it is in the best interest to deny this request or at worst, just take a little more time, sit on it, maybe get that public feedback, um, look into a finalized policy, a finalized contract before making a final decision. And, um, one thing the chief has mentioned, that this is made to further police this city. And I think you should ask yourselves before making a decision today, if Eureka citizens want to be further policed. I do believe the intent of the chief is wonderful. Uh, I think they're trying to help the community. I just don't think this is the way. Uh, please, please, I urge you to deny this request. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one. Do you see anyone on Zoom?
I saw someone. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to comment on this item? Please raise your hand.
Okay. Well, seeing no one, we will bring it back to council for comments and/or a motion. Anyone? Councilmember Bauer?
I just had a, a couple of thoughts here before, as we've had a long discussion about this and I think it's because we all care about privacy. Um, at the same time, I think we all recognize that, you know, we live in, um, challenging times where we're actually consider this, you know, like, it is, it seems like it's a good tool. Um, if it reduces crime, all for it. However, I think the policy still needs to be fleshed out and, um, the contract as well. I see a simple policy, um, solution as something like, um, request for information from states with laws that run counter to California law shall not be shared, you know, and simple. And that goes for any law that California has. We just shall not means you don't. Um, so something like that could be included so that we're all more comfortable, um, with this technology. But it's just a thought, considering a lot of discussions seem like, um, yeah, we are concerned that somebody could be hunting down, uh, a person from another state that is doing something totally illegal in California. And, um, we're not going to support that, you know, so it's just a thought on, on this, but I don't, um, have anything else right now.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, I, you know, I can't speak for everyone, but I don't think there's anyone here that denies the validity or the usefulness of, of these tools, uh, in identifying potential perpetrators or, or identifying particular crimes. I feel that any hesitation that I have stems partially from a combination of accountability, transparency, and lastly, privacy. That's something that, as a region, let alone a city, we, we, we really, uh, dig our heels in on. And, and before moving forward with anything like this, it, it's difficult for me to say like, yes, absolutely, because I would want to see a draft contract, want to see what that language looks like if and when we get that far. Um, as it stands, and I think as I alluded to earlier, I would be, I would be okay with passing this over to, uh, the cop board for their input and, uh, their suggestions. And I, I think as it was suggested by, uh, someone, uh, who has already made public comments, uh, the alternative would be to not move forward with this.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. Um, I would like to see, um, I would like to see this go to the cop board and to have them review, um, potential, the potential for litigation, the problems that other communities have found with these, um, with the, the Flock cameras specifically in California. So I'd like to see them look at, um, other agencies or communities who have dealt with this. I'd like to see them, uh, look at the ACLU's recommendations. And I'd like to see the potential for other options, um, for a force multiplier like this. That is, I, I appreciate that this is, um, probably, uh, very unique, but if there were an option that could serve a similar function that didn't store, that wasn't, um, nationwide, that didn't store data on Amazon servers, Amazon has a policy of turning over any and all data where if, you know, handed an appropriate subpoena, um, that I'd like to see that. So those things, other agencies and municipalities, the ACLU recommendations and other options for something similar to a Flock camera.
Was that a motion?
Is that, is, that's, has nothing to do with the policy in front of us. That would be a direction to staff. So then the motion would be to kick this down the road, to table this. Sorry, correct, I'll say it right. Until we get a report from the cop board.
So just, well, I'll wait until you guys make a decision before I start asking questions because I need some clarification.
Point of order. So we have a motion that hasn't been motioned.
I don't think there's a motion.
There's not a motion. Is, so shall we take more comment and then someone can make a different motion or the motion that's before us? Thank you.
Is the motion to table not a motion?
Oh, if that's what you want to do.
I would like to table this conversation until we get a report from the Citizen Oversight on Police Practices Board addressing those three specific areas, what other municipalities and agencies have dealt with, with the Flock cameras, what the ACLU recommendations are and how they would affect this policy, and if there are any other options for license plate readers that are not national and don't store their data on Amazon servers.
Thank you for the clarification, because that wasn't clear. So we have a motion in a second and we have, Council, Councilmember Castellano, you'd like to comment?
I support the motion. Um, I would like to, uh, make a friendly amendment to include, um, private use and regulation of Flock cameras. use and regulation of Flock cameras. And I feel like staff have captured the suggestion of Councilmember Bauer in terms of state law, though that wasn't in the motion. And also, I'm just kind of thinking about Humboldt County's sanctuary ordinance, right, is different than state law. So also, you know, state and local law in terms of that the, you know, any policy would be brought back before council or would, you know, or basically state and local, sorry.
My suggestion would be you can table this matter and to the next, or, you know, till after the, and the discussion is all of the points that you brought up, but the motion is to just table the issue or the matter, and then provide direction for staff to consider all of those other things prior to bringing it back, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Thank you for that, yes.
Thanks.
Are there any further comments? We have a motion.
So can I just, before we vote, I just want to make sure that I have everything down and that we bring everything back that you're asking for. And just so you know, I think that what staff would like to do is provide this to the IPA to look at and then provide that information to the cop for consideration, because giving the cop board homework and waiting another quarter later could be a very long time. So we'll go to the IPA to do that, and then they can provide the information. The information I plan on providing is the ACLU alternatives, the problems potentially in other communities, alternatives to the Flock camera. And then for Councilmember Castellano is private use and regulation of private use of Flock cameras within our community.
All due respect, I think that the city attorney's office should be the office to guide the next phase of this discussion to the cop board. I'm happy to work with the IPA, but there's been a lot of legal issues raised and the IPA are not lawyers. So.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
That's an excellent point.
That was my concern when he said independent police auditor. I thought we were referring this to the cop board. Okay.
I also just want to make sure that everyone understands that this might take a little bit more time than before the next cop board meeting. So if everyone is okay with, with sort of agreeing that we, you might not see this again for a few months. I think it's important to get the privacy partners involved. The folks from Flock, including Mr. Paz, said that the ACLU was a thought partner with them. And so I'd like to have plenty of time to really flesh out all of the things that have been raised today, if that's okay with everyone. And I think there is still a motion in a second.
There still is a motion in a second, and there is still a commentary. So Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
I appreciate that attorney loaned of the explanation. And with deference and respect to EPD, and I apologize that what we are likely doing tonight is going to stretch this out, and I'm cognizant of what you're trying to do and supportive of that. I just, it's also our responsibility. And I think that's what we're all trying to do is be deferential and respectful to privacy, which is the most core key thing for American citizens, I think is that right to privacy and these other things. So I feel, I feel like that's good what we're trying to do, but I'm also apologetic for how this is going to drag things out for you.
Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Unanimous yes vote to table this matter and provide staff with further directions. Motion, unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to take a five-minute break. Rejoining this meeting, and we will be discussing the Community Connection EV Charging Grant Award with City Manager Slattery.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. God, the audio is pretty tough to do. So this item here is related to a grant that staff received for EV charging stations. Back in June of 2023, staff went out and went after a Department of Transportation grant for fourteen electrical vehicle charging sites. They applied for that grant then, and then in January of this year of 2024, we were notified that we were successful in that grant for 1.9 million dollars for those fourteen charging stations. At the time of receiving that grant, the intent was to accommodate a grant through existing non-infrastructure funding. The grant requires a 20% match or a little bit over $400,000, 476,000 to be exact. Seventy-six thousand of that was intended to be staff time. 400,000 was going to be a hard match. At the time that we had received the grant, the intent was to use that non-infrastructure streets funding, non-streets infrastructure funding from the fiscal year 2425 budget. As we went through the budget process, we determined that we are at a deficit. We had to cut into that funding in order to accommodate the budget and balance the budget. And then after that, we had some cost overruns that pretty much utilized up all of the non-streets infrastructure funding that was to accommodate that. So we planned on bringing this back to council, I believe in March or April of this year. At that time, we realized that we were in that financial situation where we didn't have that match. Oh, and by the way, the match needs to be covered within the next two fiscal years. So either this year we come up 400, or we come up 200, or 400 in the next two fiscal years. So when we figured that out and we were going to bring it back to council in April, we realized that we didn't have that match accounted for. And so staff was directed to go look after grants in order to accommodate that grant match. Staff researched grants. A lot of those grants were pending or in progress, or in some situation where we weren't going to be able to definitively accommodate that grant match. So at that point in time, we contacted the granting agency, asked for extensions, and we're pretty much have come up on those extensions. So staff once again reached out to the granting agency to discuss the existing grant, which is the CFI grant from the Department of Transportation. The grant that we applied for is a two-point, has 2.5 billion dollars set aside in federal money. The round that we went after was the second year of that grant. It is a five-year grant program. And so we asked whether or not, if we rejected this grant and were able to secure the necessary match funding, would we be penalized in any way or be less competitive going for the upcoming years, which we would have three years to apply for. We were notified by them that we wouldn't be affected by it. It wouldn't affect our competitiveness and could apply in subsequent years. And so since we don't have the match set aside right now, we don't have a way of definitively assuring that we have that grant much. Staff is recommending that we reject this grant, direct staff to go after those pending grants and secure that funding necessary for the match, and then apply for the CFI grant to accommodate the fourteen charging stations in the future. That's all I have. And if there's any questions that council has, I can answer them.
So we have any questions for City Manager Slattery? Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, a quick question about the level of charging. And I should know this, but what, are they fast chargers that we were granted, or like trickle chargers?
It's a mix of Level Two and Level Three charging stations. A lot of that is due to the existing power that's at the locations, being able to accommodate it. But yeah, they're Level Two and Level Three charging stations. So they're medium to the trickle chargers, as you call them.
Okay. I mean, that's important, right? I think we all know that we need fast chargers in our community, probably more than, more than anything, but that requires a different drop from PG&E, I imagine, a whole slew of things that make it probably more costly.
But depending on the location, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. So then the intent moving forward is to pursue grant funding, or at least matching in these future years, and particularly for Level One chargers.
Yeah, so one of the issues that we have is this is federal funding, and you typically cannot match federal funding with other federal funding. As a process of looking into grants and looking into things, HCOG has what's called the Carbon Reduction Grant Program. They currently have $300,000 available this current year, and then I think in the next year they get 500 and another 500 after that. It's a competitive process with all of the entities that are part of HCOG in order to get that. That's a potential to, while it won't count for the match, we could go after that money, maybe get a couple of charging stations and lessen the amount of money that we have to give, you know, get from the other federal agency and therefore decrease the amount of match. But a combination of those things can help us so that we make sure that we have everything in place, not only for the match, but also to achieve the same level of charging stations.
And then reject, or I think you had touched on this, rejecting this grant now doesn't hurt us reapplying in the future, but is there a chance that it might become more competitive in the next few years?
I can't really speak to that. I don't know for sure what the competitiveness was. I mean, I've seen the list of awardees from the previous one. We were very much on the low end as far as the amount of money that was granted to certain entities at 1.9. But like I said, it was the second year of a five-year program. And so we, upcoming one to be the third year, and then there'd be two more years after that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Let's see. I appreciate staff's concern about fiscal responsibility, and I know that that's a value shared across council. I am curious, though, you know, I know we currently have money in reserves. I'm just curious, how much do we have in reserves? And, you know, I mean, and part of, just to kind of further embed that question is the relationship between, yes, of course, we want to bring funding in from out of the community into the community. That's a priority. And also, you know, at our last meeting, we clearly talked about different climate goals, and at a certain point, there will be a need, I am sure, for the city to also contribute funds to those efforts.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll start off with a brief answer then. I think Lane could speak more to the specifics of the reserves. But from staff's perspective, you know, we have a lot of now needs. We have, you know, a corporation yard at our Park Corporation Yard with the roof that's, that's fallen in. We have play equipment that can't be used. We have a lot of projects that we have currently that are now needs, that, you know, we don't currently have the money in order to fix. Typically, we do not take reserves out for single projects. But Director Malar can give an update on where we're at with reserves. And right now, I know they're, they're invested currently.
So at the beginning of the fiscal year, we started with about 25% of our budgeted expenditures in the general fund as reserve. So that's approximately 11 million dollars. And we adopted a policy a couple of years ago that we would maintain a level of 25% of budgeted expenditures. So theoretically, as costs go up, so does that reserve level. So because we have a deficit budgeted in the general fund of approximately a million dollars, there's a good chance that we fall below that 25% or three-month threshold. So there is the option of changing your policy so that the threshold, threshold is lower and thereby making more money is available to these types of projects. But that would require an action from council.
Thank you. And then one other question related to the grant itself, and Councilmember Bauer spoke to this a little bit, just in terms of, you know, the technology and even our need and city plan is, you know, kind of changing month to month, year to year. So I'm curious, you know, would, were we to apply for this grant a second time, would we change what we applied for, or how might that change to meet the needs and possibilities and limitations, especially related to electric infrastructure capacity?
Yeah, that would definitely be something we need to talk more with PG&E. I just learned today, discussing the Earth Center, that there's a program called Rule 29 that can be utilized, I know by HTN, but I believe by the city, that could potentially allow us to get more power dropped at certain locations in order to accommodate these. I forget, I'm not an expert. I think it's 480 volts. I forget what it takes for the, for the fast chargers, but it's definitely a higher upgrade. That's something we'd have to work with PG&E to do in advance of going after this. I don't know if the timing would work, and I'm sure that we could look into that and determine whether or not we could get more fast chargers. I know that the reason why I got more information on this is because we definitely want to make sure that the Earth Center has those fast chargers. And I know in that location there, it will require a separate drop from PG&E in order to accommodate it.
Thank you. And then, you know, I guess just in terms of the two-year timeline for the current grant, does it seem unlikely that we would be able to meet that match with other funding in the two-year timeline?
I can't be for sure about that. I don't know what the probability is. I can say from existing funding, it doesn't look good. Our non-streets infrastructure money, you know, next year, we're likely going to be going out for the lease bonds for the ops complex and the other facilities. And that money that is set aside is intended to pay off that debt from the general fund. I also know that our current unfunded liability is, is looking to spike significantly. So internally, I know that those funds are, are not likely to be available. But as far as our competitiveness in those grants, I spoke with the project manager that's working on this. She feels that there's, you know, we could be competitive. We just don't know for sure if we could get that. That's why, you know, we recommend going and getting that first and then reapplying.
Thank you. Are there any? Councilmember Bauer?
These are federal funds, right?
Correct. The Caltrans Administrators.
Okay. So, I mean, to me, it seems like there needs to be a policy shift from the feds, because as a disadvantaged community, we're expected to contribute the same amount as Beverly Hills, right, for charging stations, which is, which is ridiculous. But maybe there also needs to be policy at the state level, like, we're trying to achieve the state's climate goals. State, you provide the match for our disadvantaged community. I mean, it's not really a question as much, but I think that's something that we need to consider. Like, how do we address the policies that make this challenging for someone like us? So I guess that is a question, though. Does, do the feds have a policy for disadvantaged communities to give us, like, require a smaller match?
Not that, not for this program. And I know for the PA, the Port Infrastructure Development Grant that we got for the Fisherman's Terminal, they require the same match across the board regardless of population or size or anything. And it makes it difficult, especially for that instance. We had a, a cost estimate that was well below what came in. And when that cost estimate came in, it raised the price of the project and therefore erased our match as well. So you still need to maintain that 20%. So if we were to go out, and let's say we went out to bid for this project and it came in at, you know, with the match, we'd be at 2.3 million. So let's say it came in at 2.6 million of the total costs, we would have to, you know, equivalently raise that 20%. Same thing is said if it came in below, though. If it came in below that, that 20% would lower. But it is 20%.
Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone in chambers that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring Seeing none, we'll bring it over to Zoom. Do you see anybody on Zoom? Matt?
Good, good evening, everyone. My name's Matt Simmons. I am the climate attorney at EPIC, the Environmental Protection Information Center. Climate change is already here. The devastating impacts caused by Hurricane Helene are only the most recent reminder of that. But that doesn't mean we should despair. Every additional particle of greenhouse gas emitted contributes to the problem and makes the world a more dangerous place for all of us. Here in Humboldt, transportation is our number one source of greenhouse gas emissions. So we need to make EV adoption as attractive as possible in order to get people to switch from driving greenhouse gas emitting internal combustion vehicles to EVs. One of the main impediments to folks purchasing EVs is concerns about places to charge it. While many people who currently own EVs charge them at home, if we want EVs to be available to all Eureka's, including those who may live in apartments without dedicated charging infrastructure, we need to build a robust system of chargers here in town. I myself currently live in a home where charging an electric vehicle is impossible. This need is why the soon-to-be-approved Humboldt County Climate Action Plan calls for increasing the number of public electric vehicle charging stations in order to directly reduce our region's emissions. An additional benefit that I will point out is that people will be more likely to visit Eureka and charge their cars here. These visitors would likely shop or dine while their vehicles are charging, which would have an economic benefit to the city. Building these EV chargers takes time. Instead of delaying, we should be pushing to build them as soon as possible. Rejecting this grant would send a signal that the city isn't willing to do all it can to fight climate change and encourage folks to continue to purchase internal combustion vehicles. The climate crisis won't conveniently wait for a time when this is easy or convenient. And there is no guarantee that if we reapply for this grant, we will receive it again. And even if we do get it, we will likely be in the same position of having to look for matching funds. City manager Slattery talks about wanting to prioritize now needs, but I believe that mitigating our climate emissions via additional public EV chargers is a now need and has been for quite some time. The city has time to budget for this additional cost. Budgeting is about setting our priorities as a city. I believe that Eureka should be prioritizing climate mitigation in its budget, and I ask you not to reject this grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you see anyone else, Shannon?
I see no one else on Zoom.
So we'll bring it back to council for comments, motion?
I saw a comment.
Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is the kind of thing that I think we all know we need to do. I will say, though, I, I understand the budgetary issues, and I'm frustrated by the fact that it requires a small city like us to pony up so much money when the federal government, state government, and the globe all require this pretty large shift in, in energy use and how we retool society. So I'm, I'm frustrated on two counts, the money and how it affects our budget. But at the same time, you know, the 14 stations are roughly a half a percent of the 3,000 that we need. They're not fast charging. I pledge, we go to CalCities to, to work on legislation to make the state pay up in the future to cover our match because we have a lot of other things too to work on. But it's like, it pains me to, to, say, to reject this. But I, I know it's not the end for us as far as grant money goes. And, you know, I'll work hard at the state and federal level to, to try and figure out a solution and make things go faster. That's my pledge. Yeah, I'll leave it at that. Hopefully, somebody else has something to say for now.
Councilmember Conchera Stillos.
Guess just to echo, I think just to echo a lot of what Councilmember Bauer just said, same thing, almost $2 million going back is just a gut punch. And on something that we're, you know, saying is really important to us and stuff. And I understand, you know, the situation that we're in economically, and you guys have to hear me sound off about that about once a month. And so I, I understand where we're at, but I just, I'm, I'm bummed about this, for us to lose 1.9 million. And I agree with Councilmember Bauer, there's a number of just discrepancies, even at like state, but especially federal level, in how they deal with rural and small and poor communities. And we saw that with what happened with Rio Del and their FEMA money. So there's just so many areas where things need to be scaled down, and they take into account this kind of stuff. And this is just one more area, because if we're going to hit these targets that the state's asking us for, I mean, if we're really serious, serious about this, they've got to kind of find a way to help us out on this. So I agree with you. I think whatever way we can kind of sound the alarm on that stuff, which doesn't help us in the meantime, but yeah.
So is that a motion?
I, I don't know. Councilmember Bauer?
Okay. Well, because there is no comment, there is no motion. Councilmember Moulton?
I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second? Please, Councilmember Castellano, did you want to say something?
I do. Surprise. I, I appreciate, you know, I did request bringing this before council, and, you know, partially because though it's an uncomfortable conversation, I think it's important for us to have this conversation publicly because these are the kinds of things that small cities face when we're trying to address our climate action plans. I might disagree somewhat with the rest of council. The only, my only qualm about my disagreement is I do think that there could be opportunities in a second round of applications to sort of maybe revise our application a little bit in terms of, you know, current opportunities. I do think that I'm, I'm less concerned about the financial problems specifically because I think that those, I think there are a lot of opportunities coming up and in the immediate future in terms of finding different sources of funding. So, you know, my, my biggest concern is more like whether the grant that was applied for is the specific plan that we want for our community or not in terms of like fast charging, things like that. But I do think that, you know, there's going to be continued sources of funding for climate-related infrastructure coming forward, and that we will be very competitive for them.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second? If there's no further comment, let's vote.
Councilmember Fernandez, Councilmember Castellano, vote no. Three yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. This moves us to future agenda items. Councilmember Castellano.
Oh my gosh. Just quickly, I do think it might be useful to have an ad hoc working group related to Climate Action Plan, Climate Action. And then, gosh, a few months ago, I did request an ad hoc group related to tourism and marketing, and just wanted to sort of bring that up again. It was already, that was already agreed upon by council. It's just sort of a friendly reminder.
So?
This ad hoc group, just, just the Climate Action one. I don't think we need to do the one that we already did, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything further? Okay, city manager reports. City manager Slattery?
Good evening again, mayor and council. So Captain, Chief, that's horrible, that was a long time ago. Chief Stevens alluded to this earlier. He's going to provide a report to council on current staffing levels, which are getting better. Please be positive, it's getting a little bit better. And also patrol.
Good evening again, mayor and council. I just want to take a little bit of time tonight to talk about, like the city manager alluded to, our current staffing, recruiting efforts, our retention, and just give you some stats on where we stand in the first nine months of 2024. I'm going to start with the stats, and then I'll end with where we're at with staffing. Eureka Police Department officers have handled 31,519 calls for service so far in the first nine months. They've also initiated 12,265 activities on their own. So we are currently still staffed with 12 and a half hour mandatory shifts. I'm feeling overtime on almost every vac, on every watch right now due to vacations, officers out on maternity leave, officers injured. So we have like three officers out on workers' comp right now. So everyone is really stepping up. Our members of our special teams are coming in and working both from our drug task force, from our investigations unit covering shifts for us. So it's been greatly appreciated, and everybody understands the mission. Of those self-initiated activities by our officers, they've conducted 1,919 traffic stops over the last nine months. We've made 1,294 misdemeanor arrests, 596 felony arrests, written 1,726 misdemeanor reports, 1,270 felony reports, and 833 other documentation reports. When you take those calls for service, the 31,519, you figure we have on average eight officers on call or on duty any day. They handle about 14 calls a day. When I left to come to this meeting today, we were at 160 calls for service already today. We average, honestly, during the week, it's over 200 calls a day that they go to. So you figure they're handling around 14 calls a day, and a lot of those calls are two officer calls, so it takes up a lot of their time. Mental health calls, we've handled 1,053. We've only issued or authorized 60 holds, 5150 holds. So our divert average still is 94%, which is great, and that's across the board, both with CSAT, but also our patrol officers handling those calls for service when both care and CSAT are on duty at the time. So that is preventing people from being in our hospitals, clogging up a lot of our other assets that we have within our county, and plus getting them to the right assets and right people they need to get their best service. Our front office, they work diligently every day handling our reports, doing all our distributions. But they also have serviced over 4,000 people at their front counter, and those are people coming to get property, people eating live scans. So we almost have somebody sitting up there full-time just to handle the people coming and going out of the front office. We have made 93 DUI arrests so far this year, which is a pretty good stat given our staffing. So our patrol officers are out there in between calls for service, still seeking DUIs and trying to get those dangerous drivers off the street. Want to talk a minute about our dispatch center. So far this year, they've handled 63,160 non-emergency calls for service, 22,791 911 calls, 286 fire calls, and 497 medical calls. Fortunately for dispatch, unfortunately for patrol, two of the officers that we have on our workers' comp are qualified as dispatchers. So while they are down multiple positions, because we have two dispatchers out on maternity leave, all healthy and happy, brand-new babies joining our family, which is great, we're able to fill those vacancies with the officers. So we're taken from one and given to the other. But it's working out for us right now. All these activities, everything we've done from May till the end of September, we've also handled all the special events that we've had in the city, which are great, but we still need to police those. Unfortunately, due to staffing issues, I've not policed them or staffed them in a manner that we did last year. But we still have put in 610 hours of overtime to staff the special events within the city of Eureka during that time, and I'm glad to report we've had success through all of those. So I appreciate the extra efforts by all the personnel and EPD, and that's our officers, our investigators, and some of our community service officers who have stepped up to help cover that overtime. So as far as staffing goes, and this is, I'm going to preface this with on paper, okay? And I'll give you some timelines because it sounds really good on paper. Currently, I only have two patrol vacancies on paper, and I have one depending partner, so we may have three vacancies here in the near future. That's great. It's awesome. However, three of those currently are in the academy. They won't be fully certified until April, May, hoping they pass the academy and we get through FTO. Three of those are in the current hiring process for the January academy, two of them are confirmed, one is still working through the process. So that's six that you can consider in vacancies because we don't have them on the street right now, and they're not helping with the calls for service, plus the two that I have, that's eight. So on paper, we're getting there, but we're still have some staffing issues that we're trying to deal with. I am very hopeful for 2025 that we'll be able to add a specialty position within our department that'll be very beneficial to the city. I have to see, again, once this final process gets through with the hiring, where we sit with staffing numbers, but I think I will be able to make that happen. And 2026 looks very promising. If we can continue to hold on to the people we have and hire the people we need, then we will be able to make some serious changes within the department to help better police the city in a manner that is conducive to deal with some of the issues that the community is facing and that we're hearing about on a daily basis. In our dispatch center, we have two vacancies right now. We had a great test this last week. We had 26 pass the written exam. So we have nine coming to interviews probably next week, and then we have 17 in reserve, depending on how those nine do in their interviews. So that's promising. We had one brand-new dispatcher start today, so that's good. She'll be available for full-time duty on her own, probably in four to six months. I have one CSO position that we're trying to fill, a community service officer. That individual is still in backgrounds, but they live in Southern California, so it just takes a little bit longer, but we're, soon we'll be there. Have one police records technician in backgrounds, and that's the one vacancy we have. And the hardest position we have to fill right now is our animal control officer. We've gone through three recruitments and have not been able to get somebody either to pass the test or to pass the background process to fill that role. I'm working with HR on that issue right now, and if it doesn't work out, then we'll be reflying that position shortly and hopefully find some local talent that we can bring onto our department to fill that role. It's a vital role, and it's causing more calls for service for patrol and our community service officers to try to deal with. I really want to give a shout out to our recruiting team and to the members of our department because they've been the best recruiters through this entire process. We've changed a lot of things that we've done, the way we advertise our jobs, our social media posts, working with HR and where we're advertising them, changing some of our job classifications. And I think society as a whole and the job force has changed because we're seeing more and more applicants each time we fly a position. So that is all positive stuff. I also want to thank the city and the council for passing the budget for EPOA and our, the new contract, because that really has helped with retention. And I think that's a lot of the reason why a lot of the people are still staying, is they're willing to fight through this right now because there's a light at the end of the tunnel. But that contract was very beneficial, and they're very appreciative of that, and they're giving of themselves every day to the city. And every day they're out there. Patrol's the backbone of the city, and if it wasn't for them, then I don't know where we'd be. So I just want to give a shout out to our agency. Everybody is stepping up in these times, and everybody's working hard and doing the best they can for the city, and we will continue to do so. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about staffing or calls for service.
Thank you, chief. Do you have any questions? Councilmember Bauer?
Thanks, chief. That was a great report. It's amazing. The call volume is pretty striking, I think, for a lot of us to hear. I had a question, you know, get a lot of calls, had a meeting with some folks in the ward about, you know, kind of a lot new, a lot of new people showing up, new activity, you know, big RVs and that kind of thing on the waterfront. I'm just curious if, when we contact people, for whatever reason, do we ask, like, where you're from, how long you've been here? Are those kind of common questions?
Sometimes they are. Generally, our personnel have been dealing with them for a long period of time, chasing them around, as we call it, just from one place to another. I can with confidence tell you today that the RV from Arcata was found in the city and towed today for violations. That still had Arcata's sticker on it from their abatement and told pretty much, you need to go outside of Arcata somewhere, and they ended up in the city. So we're hearing more and more of that potentially being a possibility that's occurring, and that's maybe where some of the people are coming from. But today is the first day that actually one of my employees was able to confidently tell me that they were told that, and there's evidence on the vehicle that that's where it came from. And now they no longer have their vehicle.
Okay. Yeah, I thought I heard something like that, but thank you for, for that information.
Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, chief, for that report and to all the office.
Thank you, chief, for that report and to all the officers who are stepping up on this time of being short staffed. I appreciate you taking the long view, recruiting, putting people through the academy, you know, looking for officers that want to stick around. And I think that can build some loyalty to the department as well as the community. First, can can you send us those stats, I'd love to just have them at my fingertips, those numbers.
Yeah, I can, and beginning a couple of months ago, we started posting them at the beginning of every month for the month. So they will be on our Facebook page and Instagram page, we do a monthly stats at the beginning of each month. For the prior month, but this encompasses everything and yes, I can send that to you.
Thank you, I didn't know that. Also, have you? Have you noticed any trends up or down, maybe in felonies or misdemeanors?
No, I think, you know, we're in the prime season to start seeing the trends of the package thefts at homes because we're getting into the holiday season. More residential burglaries or at least casing of houses because of the holiday season. But generally right now, from what I'm hearing and seeing. I can't say there's a particular trend with more violent crime or more misdemeanor crime vandalism or anything like that, it seems to be consistent across the board.
Just the just the seasonal changes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deluge.
I I've gotten in trouble for doing my comments and questions in the wrong order, so.
This is a report.
I've been scolded. So I don't have any any questions for you, but I was gonna thank you, I noticed, you know, I follow EPD on Facebook and. And on Instagram, and I was gonna just say I appreciate that you guys have been providing those. Letting us know who's getting employee of the month or these different, you know, acknowledgements or the. You know, just recently talking about how many recovered stolen vehicles. I was blown away at some of the numbers on some of the officers on how many vehicles they've recovered. But also just those statistics, I think, just give us all this, give the entire community an understanding of. How much work is being done, which is a just a monumental amount of calls coming in, I don't say that lightly, but it's just a lot of calls. For service when you look at other communities around us like Arcata Fortuna, it's really high for Eureka and just. What a good job you guys are doing with still a pretty small crew, so I really appreciate that. I appreciate you giving us an update to on kind of where you guys are at in that recruiting and. And I I hope that it is the budget in part that's really helped that, I sure hope so. And just today, you know, my my neighborhood is an area of activity, I get to see you guys all the time and frequently on my street. And so that's no joke, you could get my three block radius, but. I just, I appreciate every time I interact and I see you guys interacting with my neighbors. How professional and how kind you are with some of my neighbors that are very elderly or experiencing other crises and I. Came up on something today and saw EPD and was watching the officers just be so kind and very professional. And there was a little child involved and they were being just, you know. Obviously very openly, very kind and loving to this kid, and I just thought I'm very grateful for all of you, how you guys train and how you really handle things, it's really. Something, and I was so impressed when I went out with you guys, and I just continue to be impressed, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano.
Just to reiterate the appreciation, thank you, I'm really proud of the work you do and your leadership. I'm curious in terms of. You know, folks who are at the academy, are there further ways we could, you know, I know that there's kind of some supports of people being at the academy, do you feel that they're? Yeah, how do you feel about the kind of likelihood of them graduating moving forward, are there are there any supports that you feel like are lacking?
Yeah, no, I'm relatively confident they're in their final module, they call it, at the academy, they're graduating. That are three, bless you, that are three in the academy will graduate. An injury may be the only thing that keeps one of them from from graduating, but we would put them back through the next mod, and when that came back open so they could finish the academy and graduate. They're supported by a chain of command of individuals who are either instructors at the academy and or responsible for our training program within the department, so. Currently Sergeant Swanson's an instructor at the academy, he's out there all the time, he's our primary point of contact. Sergeant Omi is our field training officer or coordinator, so he's in charge of our training program and all our new employees. So if they can't get ahold of Sergeant Swanson, they can call him, and then Commander Ripang is next in that chain of command, so they always have someone they can talk to, they always have someone that's checking in on them at the academy. We have other instructors that teach out there, so they have the ability to check in on them, and they have the ability to come by the department anytime they want to. They work out there, we have interactions with them, so they're getting the support they need.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Moving on to. Council reports. Council reports, Councilmember Castellano.
I'll be quick, I attended the California Main Street Conference, the HCOG. Meeting, the continue to host the Monday Housing Group, and there's some little planning work I'm doing around the connection. Trail between Eureka and Arcata.
Thank you, and I did want to appreciate you for covering me in the HCOG meeting again, thank you, you're a great great mayor pro tem. Councilmember Molton.
Thank you, mayor, I have no travel to report, although I did attend a two by two meeting with Eureka City Schools. Always appreciate the chance for collaboration between those two agencies, and they pointed out that there is there is a new. A new focus on creating career tracks for folks going through Eureka High specifically. Aimed at local industries, so not just career tracks sort of in general, but looking at local industries, folks who might be hiring so that they can. Graduate students that are ready to be hired locally, so they can, we can keep our talented kids here, and I love to see that. I attended a meeting that was ostensibly a group that works with. Elected officials around the country to develop policies around around climate change, and I can't remember the name of the group. Somebody. Elected Officials Protecting America, but that wasn't the interesting part. The interesting part was that the table was full of members of the Uroch tribe and the Uroch tribal government, and I got to hear firsthand. Their concerns around the wind development. And how few tables they are sitting at in that process, and I think that's something that. Anybody who's organizing conversations around developing wind and developing industry in the bay. Needs to make sure that the Uroch and the Wiat are at the table, because green energy is great, and we can't. I'm concerned about the health of Sovereign and Sacred Tulawat Island. I'm looking forward to Arts Alive, on a lighter note, this is the spooky one, October, the Zombie Walk starts at five thirty. Get your gore on and go to the courthouse at five thirty, and they'll do a zombie takeover of Old Town, this is the eleventh annual Zombie Walk. And heading in the next few weeks, I'm looking forward to the League of California Cities, it's always great to go learn what other cities are doing with similar. Issues that Eureka has, new ideas, and I just want to appreciate our council members who. Work with the league throughout the year to advocate for small cities, rural cities, coastal cities, because we are all of those things, thanks, you two.
Councilmember Fernandez.
I attended a conference held in Houston sponsored by the National. Thank you, I attended a conference held in Houston. Hosted by the National Association for Latino Elected and Appointed Officials. It was about emergency management and disaster preparedness, and it was quite overwhelming, but it was a lot to take away, and I was very glad to do it. Largely I'd taken away about the multi jurisdictional planning and how that might be coming up soon for our county, and how we can participate in that and. How building codes can be resilient in securing buildings and communities, and the need for outreach particularly to under represent residents and communities. Much like Councilmember Molton, also participated with a meeting put together by the elected officials protecting America. With their executive director and state legislator from Maine. It was interesting and unique to hear the voices, particularly of Uroch members actually having a conversation with tribal members. And hearing concerns that I'd only gotten to either read about or receive secondhand, so. Like, like my colleague said, there's a lot to do regarding the topic of wind energy, offshore wind energy moving forward. Also attended the two by two with Eureka City Schools, that's already been highlighted, and of course, we talked about the Jacobs property and the likely and. What seems to be a gradual move towards CHP. Learned that they had eleven people request paperwork for an appointment to an open position in District Two, which remains vacant as of this election season, it's an oddly shaped district and kind of a. Crab claw shape that goes from Humboldt Hill up to parts of Myrtle Town. I had the the fortune of being able to attend the Club Rush last Thursday at Eureka High School, and it was quite lively, quite jovial compared to what I've seen in previous years, so. It was a fantastic opportunity to see students express their interests, as well as another opportunity to see the ballet folklorico performers. Later this week, I'm attending a Cal Poly, well, I'm attending an event hosted by the. Politics Club at Cal Poly, so I'll likely have a report on that when we next meet. And then just for folks out there, Cal Poly's hosting an in person open forum as part of their campus presidential search from eleven to one on Thursday this. This next week, Thursday, October tenth, at the Van Duser Theater. And then, lastly, suffice to say, I'm not a fan of our monopolistic healthcare. Predator provider here in Humboldt, Providence, while we already have limited access to specialists and services here in our remote community, no one should have to suffer from a disillusioned policy. That prevents them from receiving much needed medical care, and for those folks that are unaware, Providence St. Joseph's, per their own policy. Denied a woman a much needed reproductive procedure, an abortion. With staff going as far as giving her a bucket and towels in case something happened in the car while having instead to travel to Mad River Hospital. At best, the policy was misinterpreted, but the worst remains, however, because she was denied medical care. And I know that there's not much we can do as a council beyond advocating for better healthcare here in our Redwood region. But when our only medical trauma treating hospital declines to treat someone as a human. Then at a minimum, we need to condemn their actions and determine how we move forward. So we can adequately and equitably treat the members of our community, bodily autonomy is a right, and that includes reproductive care in all its forms.
Thank you. I must wanted to do a mic drop. Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, I I had a attended a meeting with RCEA where we had a great discussion on nuclear power. Had a meeting with the bridge, the folks in the Bridge District, talk about their concerns. I went to Rotary, Rotary, Rotary Youth Exchange BBQ, which is great. Meeting some of the youth there that are on exchange, we're gonna have an exchange student at our house from Finland here. Come springtime, so it should be fun. Heads up to, there's a great presentation, I should be posted online, probably through the Shots Energy Lab about seabirds. And and the effects of wind power on them, and it was, I learned a ton, I suggest watching this, only a couple hours. Tended a fundraiser for one of our firefighters in need of some support right now. And, yeah, I'll be attending the League of California Cities with a lot of us in a couple of weeks and look forward to working with our other city council members and. You know. Trying to see what we can do for our little rural city here. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Contreras Deluge.
Yeah, so I had the Harbor two by two. And then I also met with EOPA and disclosure, I've been a part of EOPA for a member for like. Almost the whole time I've been elected. And so I had a meeting with them along with Supervisor Wilson and a couple of members of the Arcata City Council. That attended and then and then I had another meeting that I was at with Mario and Katie, and that was mostly with the Uroch tribe. And was glad that, you know, we had that opportunity, we spent, it was quite long, we were in there for hours just getting to listen to everybody visit with us and and talk with us about their concerns. I also got to go to the community discussion on the medical development that's gonna be going. That's planned for, oh, gosh, over there off of Harris, I don't know if it has a name yet, but the we're.
Stokes.
It is called Stokes, okay, I wasn't.
Well, Stokes is the developer.
Right, yeah, Dr. Stokes, yeah, so. Anyway, I also attended a Cal City's Latino Caucus Conference that had a report out from the governor's office. Went to the fundraiser for Fire Inspector Quanti Cook. And yeah, that's my report.
I just, I admire our council, you know, you guys work so hard and do so much for our city. And you get just above and beyond, and I just, I really appreciate that, and listening to you all tonight, really, I just felt so proud. And on that, we're adjourned.